... six, two thousand and seven. Will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Ms. Contreras. Will you please give us the TV coverage announcement?
Good morning, Chair Cooney. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, Channel twenty, at nine AM in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Andres Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Re-broadcasted Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at five PM on CSB-TV Channel twenty. For the roll call, Commissioner Brown? Here. Commissioner Blau?
Here.
Commissioner Smizer?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here. Thank you very much. And, Ms. Black, good morning. The agenda status report, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning, we have three items on your agenda, and we expect all three to go forward today. The two are continued items, Park Hills Estates and the De Silva addition appeal, and then a new item, the Roberts Equestrian Academy. And I'm hopeful we will conclude business before noon.
In the event we don't, Ms. Black, I have had a request with regard to item three, since a number of the speakers on that matter are coming from the San Andres Valley to see if we can fit it in before noon. So we'll see where we are after our first item and make a decision on that.
Great.
The projection report?
Yes. Mr. Chair, actually, this morning, I have a longer-term projection report for you as well, but I'll go over our normal projection report first. First item is, you do have a special site visit tomorrow to the North Hills Project Site. We will be meeting at the Betaravia Center at eight thirty. We'll convene in the hearing room for about a half an hour. I'll give a little bit of a briefing and context as to what we're hoping to accomplish, and then we'll load up into buses and go out to the site, and we expect to return by noon. Wear comfortable shoes, because we will be getting off the bus a couple of times, if you want to. You don't have to get off the bus, but if you'd like to. Then we'll have another special hearing that will replace our regular hearing of June thirteenth, I mean, yes, June thirteenth, on June twelfth, which is a Tuesday, and that is to take up the North Hills initiation request. So that'll be conducted next Tuesday in Santa Maria at the Betaravia Center, and it'll start at nine o'clock. We have one other item on the agenda, and that is a consent agenda item, which is a government code consistency finding, so I expect us to start fairly soon after completing our administrative agenda. The other item that was projected to be on that date, the North Point Village, is going to be dropped from the agenda, and we'll re-agendize it when it's ready for the Commission's action. So again, that's Tuesday, June twelfth, for the actual hearing on North Hills. I will be letting everybody know that we won't be answering a lot of questions about, or any questions really, about the project tomorrow. Our focus is really on looking at the site and getting familiar with the site and a feel for the site, so that'll be part of the eight-thirty discussion. Moving on, you have a meeting on June twenty-seventh, which is getting close to being filled. I won't be here at that meeting, so Cynthia Mendoza will be going over the agenda status and the projection report, and Dave Ward, our new deputy director in the South County, will be sitting with the Commission. So just wanted you to know that. July fourth is a holiday week, and July fourth actually falls on Wednesday, so we're going to cancel the Commission's meeting that week. July eleventh, we have quite a busy day, and then with the Diamond Rock mine coming back to your Commission for consideration. And I don't think I have anything else of particular to note on the normal projection report. With respect to a longer-term projection, I thought it was about the right time of year to talk about things that we believe will be coming before the Commission for the rest of the year. And you can tell that my confidence level falls substantially in terms of both the amount of time and the actual dates for items as we progress through the year, but this gives you an idea of what we're facing from August to the end of the year. So on the longer-term projection, we have in August future work plan items by long-range planning of about an hour's discussion. I think that's something that your Commission had requested when the work program came to you for comment. We expect to bring the ordinance six-six-one consistency review to the Commission August twenty-second, as well as the Santa Barbara Ranch Transfer of Development Rights discussion. We're not going to be asking you to make a specific recommendation on an ordinance, so you can see that that day's already quite busy, if those two actually end up coming forward on that day. We have Laguna Blanca, which we expect to come in August or September for your Commission's action. And then the Tranquion Ridge Project, we believe will be ready in August or September, but other forces may continue that further into the year. So at this moment, we believe it'll be August or September, and we'll let you know as things get closer. For September, we expect the long-range planning section to bring the Housing Element EIR Alternative Section to the Commission for a discussion of potential rezoned sites, and we expect that to take about a half a day or four hours. The Junction Project in Los Alamos is expected to come in September, and then a discussion of policy-changing affect, excuse me, policy changes affecting general plan amendments in the San Andres Valley is expected to come forward to your Commission. Santinas Airport and Lompoc Wind are projected for either September or October. In October, three Santa Maria or North County projects are expected to be coming to fruition, including the Mountain View Homes Project, Lucas Llewellyn Winery, and the Will Union Plaza Project in Old Town Orchid. November proves, if this really holds, we have a heck of a scheduling dilemma in November, but I'm not going to worry about this right now, because these things tend to take care of themselves. But we have three very large items competing for time in November, including the Botanic Gardens Project, the Housing Element, and I expect that that will take at least a full day, if not longer, and Santa Barbara Ranch, which will take, initially, I think it'll take a full hearing, and I'm sure it will take several. Then into December, we've got the Stagestop Plaza Project in the Valley, and then the Los Alamos Community Plan Update Initiation. So there's a lot of large projects in progress, and I'll keep you up to date as these timeframes become a little bit more firm, and they'll end up being included on the real projection report that you get every week with the Commission. But I just thought it was a helpful thing to see how your work is shaping up.
I think it is helpful, at least in terms of Commissioners' planning, whether they want to stay on the Commission any longer.
That wasn't my intent.
Oh, I see. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to ask about Diamond Rock. What time of the day are you expecting to schedule that, first thing, so people in...
We typically, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, we typically scheduled continued items for the first item of the day. So unless the Chair wanted to do something different, that's what we would anticipate.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I'd love to see this every meeting, to tell you the truth. What's nice about this for me is that I'm not always aware of projects that you're working on, so if I know all the projects that are in the hopper, it sure is a, makes it a lot more useful for me.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, this isn't all the projects. This is just the big projects. So there'll be others that come onto the agenda that you won't see in a longer-term projection report like that. I was trying to pick projects that would take at least three or four hours, that, which is a pretty substantial time commitment for the Commission, so there'll be others that'll sneak in as we go through. And we can get you lists of discretionary projects if you'd like to see them.
That'd be great.
I do think that's a separate piece of information that's valuable. It's hard to keep up. It's only a snapshot, but I can say in the past that as much as you try and project what might come to the Commission, there are appeals that can't be anticipated, and so the best staff can do, I think, is to say, at this point in June of 'oh-seven, here's what is potentially coming to the Commission.
My only comment is, people come up to me and say, gee, I'm going to be at your hearing in three months. I'm going, oh, what was it about? They know nothing about it. At least if I had a list, you could look more intelligent when someone asks you a question about it or makes comment, is all.
Right. Well, we'll continue to put those that we are pretty confident regarding the dates on this more formal projection report, and I'll update this as things change. I don't know if I'll do it every week, but I'll update it as it changes.
In light of your report, Ms. Black, we need to take action to cancel our meeting of the thirteenth?
Yes. Mr. Chair, yes, you should do that.
Can we have a motion, then, to do that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to cancel our meeting of June thirteenth.
I'll second that. Is that including rescheduling for the twelfth, or we need a motion for that, or is that another issue?
We actually don't, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau. We don't require a motion to set a special hearing.
Okay, then I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. This is the point at the hearing, each meeting, where we offer an opportunity to the public to come forward and make comments on matters not on today's agenda, in case any of the members of the public are here this morning. We haven't received any speaker slips, but that shouldn't foreclose you. If you have a matter you wish to address the Commission regarding, which is not on today's agenda, now's the time to come forward. Is there anyone in that category? I think everyone is here for one of the projects, so we'll move on to the Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, a couple of days ago, there was a statement in the news press and a report by the grand jury that, to the point, is that there's no penalty if we do not fulfill the affordable housing issues. And through the past six or seven years, we've always been told by staff that there would be sanctions. Sanctions and penalty are two separate words, and I wonder if perhaps Mr. Baker could help clarify that situation for us.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, I would say, I guess technically, there are no penalties or sanctions that come from HCD if you don't fulfill it, as, and Mr. Allen can state this maybe more succinctly than I, but what in effect you have, though, is that if you don't have an approved housing element, then you open yourself up to challenges by, other than HCD, which could be, lead to some very significant judicial sanctions that be placed on the county in terms of development, which could be shutting down development entirely. I mean, that would be the most drastic thing. And he may want to add something to that, but that's, essentially, that's the way I understand it.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. The government code provides explicitly that if a housing element is not in compliance, or if general plan is not in compliance, if suit is brought to bring the element into compliance, the court shall step in and take one or more of several actions. And those actions include ordering no building permits, permits for subdivision, construction permits of any kind be allowed, with the exception of orders that housing that is compliant with a legal housing element be ordered. So in effect, the court may step in the shoes of a city or county's planning and development department.
So, and, Mr. Chair, if I may continue.
Sure.
So then there are sanctions of a sort. We just don't know exactly what they would be. At one time, there was a comment concerning losing some fees that we received from the state concerning affordable housing, that those would be lost, but we don't know for absolutely sure, because we've never tested the system. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, what we know for sure is that the law says that a county or a city that does not comply and that is sued is subject to court fashion remedies to bring the element into compliance. There's, you know, no uncertainty about that. The uncertainty and perhaps some of the confusion is that what courts have done and what has occurred when cities and counties have been sued is, the remedy is fashioned to the problem with that city or county's housing element. So in one instance, it may be extremely draconian, as occurred with Sacramento County, and I think Pittsburgh up in Northern California, and Folsom, you know, a number of other cities that don't leap to mind at the moment. But in other instances, you may not hear about it, because suit may have been filed, and the parties get together pretty quickly, because they'd rather work it out and then have the court step in. So I think that the point is that no city or county has put themselves out there in the spotlight and said, we're resisting, we're protesting, we're not going to do it, and succeeded, that we know of. Now, with respect to loss of funds for housing, CDBEG block grants, and so on, I'm not as conversant with all of those as, you know, members of long-range planning are. Some we may retain and not be affected, and others, I understand, may be at risk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, there have been threats in the past that there would be effects on subventions that come from the state, but there is nothing in place that does that at this point in time.
Mr. Chair, just very shortly, if I may continue, I think it's inherent upon us that we tell the public that, make a response to that no-penalty piece of information that was put in the paper. I don't have any problem with an editorial saying that, and I don't think that we have to respond every time to an editorial. However, the grand jury did put out a report, and in the grand jury, it says there is no penalty, and it's got people up and talking about, if there's no penalty, why are you involved in doing affordable housing? Let's, you know, and there's been a lot of talk about it. So I think in that vein, the planning department or somebody in the county needs to make a statement concerning that no-penalty clause, just that no-penalty clause. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I agree with you, Commissioner Valencia. I saw the reference to the grand jury report. In the first place, I'm not comfortable that the grand jury report was adequately quoted, but I believe the law, Mr. Allen, provides that the county is required to make a response to the grand jury report, and there may be something planned in that regard, notwithstanding that. And from our viewpoint as representatives of the public, I think it would be useful for you to repeat here at some point the brief presentation you gave to the Board of Supervisors a few weeks ago about the status of litigation around the state, the consequences of completed litigation, the allegations, if you will, of litigation you're aware of. I know your office is tracking this closely, and I think it would be helpful, not only for the Commissioners, but for the public in general, to keep up on exactly what's being done about enforcement of the housing laws.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, we agree with you, and I or someone from our office will certainly be giving that report at different times, both to your Commission and again to the Board.
Thank you. Commissioner Blau?
Well, actually, yes. Actually, I did read the grand jury report, and he, they did quote it accurately. It says, and quite bold in one section, that there is no penalty. However, I agree with counsel, that is wrong. The ultimate penalty is that the state comes in and acts as the planning department, and basically disbands what we do, and they have the right to do the moratorium on the billing permits. For your information, back in December, January, the Board of Supervisors appointed a stakeholder committee to do a report to them for recommendations for changes in the inclusionary housing program. And I'm happy to tell you, as a member of one of those stakeholder groups, we finished yesterday. None of the last I crossed the T, and it went to the planning department for transportation, or for submission to the Board of Supervisors. It's my understanding that that report is going to be delivered to them and discussed on June nineteenth. And so there will be some, I'm sure, some action taken by the Board relative to that report, and it does address a lot of the issues that were in the Utter's report that dealt with inclusionary housing program. So after June nineteenth, we'll can have a much better discussion about that. But yes, there are several penalties. It's, there are, but it did say that in the grand jury report, that there were no penalties.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau, and thank you for your efforts on that committee. I'm sure we'll look forward to hearing more about that. Any other Planning Commissioner informational reports? We haven't had a chance yet to mention the importance of today as being the seventy-fourth birthday of one of our Commissioners, the longest-serving Commissioner Valencia, and we'd like not only to recognize the occasion of your birthday, but also to appreciate, express appreciation for all you do for the county of Santa Barbara.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. We now have the opportunity to hear any divisional briefings. Do we have any, Mr. Baker, this morning?
Mr. Chair, no. No divisional briefings.
But, well, I guess we have some minutes before we get to your report, so we'll take that up.
Okay.
We have one set of minutes, the hearing of May second, which was reviewed by us at our last hearing. However, I had a number of small changes which have been incorporated in this version, and I'm satisfied now they correctly reflect our deliberations at the May second meeting. However, I'm open to any suggestions for further changes, if there are any, from my fellow Commissioners. Do we have a motion, then, to approve the minutes as revised and presented today of the meeting of May second?
Mr. Chair, I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Contreras, the roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Abstain.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Vote carries four-zero-one.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, Mr. Baker, your report. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, yesterday's meeting was a long one. Most of it didn't deal with planning items, fortunately. There were two items on, but one of them from the Montecito Planning Commission. The other one was the pulver lot split, which was actually approved by the Commission back in January, and the appeal was denied, and the pulvers were given the approval to go forward with their home. You might remember that this was, when it came before you, it was a two-story home. And subsequently, when the appeal came in, they modified it to make it a one-story home, slightly less square footage, and the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's right. I've got Calderon is the one that was the, anyway, the lot split had to deal with the improvement of the right-of-way for the pulver property, and they denied the appeal, and the pulver lot split can move forward. So that was there. They also did the, they set the hearing for the initiation of the North Hills Plan for July tenth, so they will be looking forward to any recommendations that come out of your body on June twelfth to, with regard to that initiation. And with that, that concludes my report.
You were going to mention the Calderon matter?
Well, the Calderon matter, yeah, it was in the first district.
Right.
But...
It was not a Montecito matter.
All the time, sorry, it wasn't Montecito, it was Summerlin, so that's right. Calderon was the one that had the two-story home. When it did left here, it was appealed, and they modified that to make it a one-story home, smaller square footage, the number of people that were against this house was reduced substantially. You essentially had one property owner with some supporting neighbors that was there to talk about it, and the Board found that it was fully in compliance with the, consistent with the policies of the county, and they therefore approved it. Again, that was a unanimous vote on that one.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Baker, very much. We appreciate your keeping us up to date on actions by the Board. That concludes our administrative agenda. We have three items on this morning's regular hearing calendar, the first of which is the Park Hill Estates Continued Hearing. We'll start that in five minutes. The Planning Commission hearing of June sixth, and item number one on our agenda is the Park Hills Estates. And Ms. Contreras, we'll read that into the record.
Thank you. The following is the hearing on the request of Susan McLaughlin, agent for the applicant DHL Realty, to consider the following applications filed on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and six, zero-six TRM zero-one, zero-six RDN zero-one, and to prove the tiered negative declaration, zero-six NGD twenty-eight pursuant to the state guidelines for the implementation of SEQA.
Thank you very much. Ms. Camel, good morning.
Good morning. Your Commission previously considered this project at a NOS public hearing on April twenty-fifth. Let's see here. What's doing this again? Hopefully, we'll have better PowerPoint luck this time. I wanted to just go through what you have in your Planning Commission packet. We included the revised findings that are underlined where there are changes or additions, revised conditions that are also redlined, revised cover sheet for the negative declaration, which identifies some comments that were inadvertently left out of the draft ND. We did consider all those comments, but they just didn't get attached to the final, and you previously had received the actual letter that was left out at the last hearing. The proposed agreement documents to remedy the five-foot strip issue, you've since received a signed version of these documents, and Mr. Reddy is here from County Council's office if you have specific questions about that issue. And reduced exhibits of the tentative track map, the grading plan and the landscape plan, you previously have received full-size versions of those, and the track map is actually the only exhibit that's been updated since the last hearing, and you received that as well. You should have also received a letter from the Park Department dated June fifth, and this letter replaces the Park Department letter dated May thirtieth. The April twenty-fifth hearing was continued primarily to address two issues. The first, to resolve the parcel validity issue that we just spoke about, and the second issue was to address the effects of residential second units on the proposed limitation on structural development on each of the parcels. The Park Hill Estates property is the fourteen-point-three-six acre larger property down here. The Jete property is approximately five acres, and the two parcels that are identified on the map as being not apart are a five-foot strip running on the southernmost part of the Pennal Road easement, and a twenty-five-foot strip running along the northern portion of that same easement. And... And essentially, those two parcels will be merged with Mr. Jete's five-foot parcel. That's sort of the end result of this, and they will become one parcel, and the 14.36 acres is what will be divided into 13 separate parcels. Do you want me to stop at this point if you have questions for Mr. Reddy, or do you want me to continue?
No, I think it's a good point to stop, and since Mr. Reddy has come down, perhaps you could just summarize the status of the agreements, and then if there are any questions, we can ask them now.
I got involved in this because the five-foot strip was determined to be an illegal division back in the early 1960s, and, but for what we're doing now, we would have to take independent action for that violation of the Subdivision Map Act. The other part I was involved in was the 25-foot strip, although determined in the early 70s to be a part of what's the rest of Park Hill Estates, it wasn't touching Park Hill Estates. It was a separate piece five feet away, which wasn't illegal because the county approved it, but it was, best word I can use for it is odd. So we had to do something to solve those two problems, and I came up with the solution which ultimately the Jete's and the Park Hill Estates owners agreed to, and that is that we would have a step transaction where the five-foot strip would be transferred to the Park Hill Estates ownership, and then the five-foot strip and the 25-foot strip would be made not a part of this map, and subsequently, a pre-approved merger of those two long strips with the Jete property would accomplish the undoing of this illegality and oddity. And the parties have agreed to this, and to consummate that transaction, I've agreed to be the escrow holder of the documents. They will, I've already received Jete's signed copy of deeds. We still need some other deeds signed by the DHL, or the Park Hill Estates property, and we'll get a voluntary merger pre-approved prior to map recordation. And when I get all those documents into my office as escrow holder, I will transfer those to the county surveyor as ex officio county clerk. He will record those in proper order to accomplish both the map recordation and the merger of these two strips into one property with Jete, and that result being, this property will be whole, the illegal strip would be undone, the oddity strip would be taken away from the non-contiguous property, and everything would be solved to the county's satisfaction and hopefully the parties. So that's the scheme, if you will, that I came up with. The parties have agreed to it, and I believe it'll work to the betterment of everybody. Any questions?
Mr. Smizer?
I don't, I don't think I dare.
Doesn't sound like it would be just a simple question and a simple answer. Are all of these merger agreements contingent upon approval by this commission of the subdivision application?
Yes, and along, collateralily with that, the recording of the map would be contingent upon them doing all that. In fact, there is a subsequent condition which staff will, has given to you that incorporates that into your decision, that you require those things to be accomplished before map recordation.
Commissioner Blau?
I just had one question. I know it came up, there was a question as to whether or not this would trigger a Prop. 13 reassessment. I assume it didn't happen, but I'd be just curious, out of my own knowledge, to know if this did or didn't.
Correct. The very first action I took the morning after we talked to the people was to go to the operations officer for the county assessor and got their letter to Mr. Jete that this will not trigger a reassessment of his primary property. Naturally, since there's a change of ownership, there will be a reassessment of the 25-foot strip, so its incremental value increase to his property as a whole will be reassessed, but that will be entirely secondary to the remaining Prop. 13 value of his five-acre property as a whole. That was a concern that I, in fact, raised and warned him about, and then proceeded to answer his concern with that.
Okay, Mr. Reddy, thank you very much for coming down and going through that with us. It is a twist on the usual subdivision process.
Do you need me for anything else?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Back to you, Ms. Campbell.
On the screen behind me is the condition that we ran by County Council that just addresses, in the event that the last little details are not finalized, that this would return to the commission. So the subdivision is dependent on this all being finalized. The second issue, and obviously you didn't get through all the conditions, but these were just the two main questions that we had heard from the planning commission, had to do with the 5,500 square foot limitation that's proposed, and whether that would apply to second units. And we did discuss this with County Council. There isn't any existing case law on this specific issue, but based on this particular project's physical setting and design, as well as development design and existing square footage of structural development within that area, and actually throughout that whole neighborhood, the structural square footage restrictions can reasonably be interpreted to encompass any and all structural development, including square footage that would be associated with potential second units that can be developed on site under state and county regulations. This slide shows the total net structural square footage for a number of surrounding parcels. Staff also evaluated similar data provided by the assessor's office for about, almost 100 parcels in that surrounding area as part of the ND preparation. The figures listed on the slide include both primary residences and all accessory structures. These parcels include a variety of home sizes, but nearly all of the parcels could still accommodate a new detached residential second unit without exceeding the proposed net square footage limitation. This assumption, of course, is based solely on square footage. It doesn't mean that every lot would be able to have a second unit. There are other requirements in the county's regulations that govern second units having to do with parking and other types of constraints. In addition, for the remaining parcels that would exceed 5,500 square feet of structural development with the addition of a second unit, most of these parcels have existing accessory structures that could potentially be converted to a second residential unit already on the site. Some of them have guest houses already, some of them have large detached garages. And finally, the county allows for second units to be attached, so any of these structures, if you had a structure that was very large, could also be converted, a portion of it could be converted to a second unit, or a portion of it could be demolished, and a new, new construction could be provided for either an attached or detached second unit. Therefore, we don't think that limiting the structural development to 5,500 square feet would in any way inhibit the ability of future owners to permit second residential units on their lots based on the existing development patterns in that area. In addition, the limitation was incorporated as a condition of approval along with other aesthetic mitigation measures and the applicant's desired guideline language to ensure that impacts associated with aesthetics, the visual character of the neighborhood, and neighborhood compatibility will be mitigated to less than significance. This is especially important when considering that this would be development of 12 new adjacent residential parcels on the existing undeveloped, highly visible property, and to ensure consistency with county policies and guidelines that address neighborhood compatibility. It'll also provide clear direction to future owners when they're designing their new homes, and will hopefully facilitate a more efficient review and approval process with the BAR, and ultimately, planning and development zoning clearance for construction on those individual lots. The condition makes no mention of how this square footage is distributed. It can be in one unit, it can be more than one unit. And the tiered ND evaluates a reasonable worst-case development scenario regarding project impacts on the surrounding environment as required by SEQA. Therefore, the ND identified the potential for each of the 12 residential lots to have 12 primary residences and associated accessory structures, including the potential for second units. However, the experience in the surrounding residential neighborhood with identical zoning has not resulted in extensive development of second residential units on these lots. While some of this may be the result of private CCNRs that restrict development to one residence on each lot, there still have been relatively few applications submitted for second residential units in the entire South Coast area. I don't know if anyone has any questions specifically about that second unit issue, either for myself or for council?
Why don't you complete your report, and then we'll take all the questions that commissioners might have.
The project findings in Section 1.2.2, and those are in Attachment A, have been supplemented to confirm that the structural square footage limitation is not designed to frustrate the ability of future owners to develop second residential units on their parcels. In addition, the findings have been revised and supplemented to address changes that have occurred to project conditions since the ND was finalized. The revised language is incorporated to either facilitate compliance with the conditions of approval or to clarify their intent. Because many of those conditions were derived from mitigation measures in the revised ND, the project findings are updated to specifically acknowledge that that revised language would not alter the intent or the effectiveness of the measures to reduce impacts to less than significant levels as anticipated in the ND, and that there will be no change in the level of environmental impacts identified in the ND as a result of those changes. And I think I might have previously said that the ND is also revised to include those additional public comments that we had previously left out. The revised conditions of approval are included in Attachment B. Changes to the original conditions are indicated with underlining in the strike-throughs, and some additional changes to conditions since distribution of staffs. May 25th memo to the commission are included on slides that I have here, so I can just go through those if you'd like me to do that. The first is that, try as I might, I didn't get the whole name in there still, any reference to the guidelines in the Eastern Galita will say, Eastern Galita Valley Residential Design Guidelines. Condition nine is, deals with street lighting, and because there is more than one pedestrian path, rather than saying pedestrian path, it will now say all pedestrian paths. Condition 26, we had inadvertently put that the fire department needed to review utility extension locations. It's not necessary, we're deleting that. We added the Park Department letter. The Park Department letter was specifically revised to make it clear that the payment of the fee is due at the time that they develop each of the lots, not prior to recordation. And as a result of this change with the five-foot strip on the landscape plan, there was some planting shown within that five-foot strip area. We will now be bringing, when the landscape plan is revised as a final, it will bring that landscaping back onto the subject property. And we had also, I had previously identified the change, or the additional condition regarding the five-foot strip that we'd done earlier. Those are all of the changes that I've included. These are revised recommendations and procedures for the commission, and I'm available for questions.
Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I appreciate your attention to detail in doing all this. There is one question I have, and that's relating to the 5,500 square foot limitation on structural development. This is relating to condition number 10. The language that you've indicated on this condition is that enclosed pole barns, excuse me, enclosed barn structures would be included in this limitation. But I want to make sure that there's no confusion that pole barns are excluded, so that somebody could put up a 10,000 square foot pole barn because it's not included in this language. So I just want to make sure that it's covering every structure that's on this parcel, so that there's no sort of, we don't sort of get into a Maxwell condition where someone can say, "Well, you didn't say that I couldn't put up a pole barn." So I'm wondering if we can sort of just tighten that language, so that's included in there as well.
Ms. Campbell, are you following?
Yes.
Okay.
They're trying to.
A suggestion would just be to eliminate the wording "enclosed" because barns, I think everyone anticipated that barns are going to be included, and I think if someone was proposing a structure like that.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the tract map, tentative tract map that has been submitted has an error in it. It identifies Lot 2, and Lot 2 is not part of that project. It was identified incorrectly. If you look at your tentative tract map on the presentation.
Oh, I'm, thank you, Commissioner Valencia. Actually, that was my mistake when I was doing my PowerPoint preparation.
Just a minor thing that could cause problems.
Yes, thank you very much. And it's actually, the exhibits are up on the wall behind us, are the official exhibits, but this is identified as Lot 2. This is actually not a part. This is Lot 2 right here. So that was an error on my part. Thank you very much for pointing that out.
All right. And one other comment on condition number nine, about three-quarters of the way down, it says landscaping and/or walls along the new roads and along the property perimeter, and here's what I focus on, shall minimize the loss of existing view corridors. So, does that mean that they'll be limited to the type of trees, or there'll be some kind of condition telling them what type of trees they can put in, what height? Is that what that means?
Members of the commission, Commissioner Valencia, actually, on condition 11, there's more detail about what can be planted within so many feet of the street to try to, both for site distance issues and for view corridor issues, and it's identified as, the condition is called view corridors, but it talks about within a certain distance along the road plantages that there'd be low growing, no more than four feet at maturity between the public road and the front yard sapback areas.
Sorry, in condition 11, so why are we discussing it in nine again?
In condition nine, it is, hang on, let me just look at the specific wording.
Hammering it in, or what? Shall minimize the loss of existing view corridors.
Commissioner Valencia, this one is specific to the roads, and it's also just to, when the BAR is looking at landscaping, there's tract improvement landscaping, which includes the landscaping that would be along the infrastructure improvements, and the other ones would be more tied to the individual lot development, such as when they develop Lot 1 and Lot 2 in the future?
Well, the other one is exact, and I don't have any problem with that. This one is going to possibly start the Hatfields and the McCoy arguments, I think. The other one tells specifically of things that you can have, and I'll defer to Commissioner Brown. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you. You know, Commissioner Valencia, as I read that, it's about the landscaping on the new access roads or adjacent to, and the pedestrian paths. And I think that that is distinguished from, I think this is being very specific so that when the BAR looks at this, they'll know, "Well, wait a minute, we're not putting these 100-foot tall eucalyptus trees adjacent to these roadways," whereas the other view corridors are protective of some of the other areas. She probably could have combined it in one, but I think it's, I think it's a little clearer here. It's just teased out. So I think it's okay, and I think that, you know, based upon some of the other things we've seen, particularly in this area where view corridors are very important, that it's essential to be explicit and to have it called out, rather than to have it sort of lumped together, where there might be some confusion or some area for wiggle room when people say, "Well, gee, I can plant all these eucalyptus trees adjacent to these private roads," and I don't think that was the intent, if that helps. I mean, that's what it is.
Mr. Chair, if I just, one final comment?
Commissioner Valencia?
I think what you're saying is absolutely true, and all, my point also is that if you're going to have some requirements, they should be consolidated in one item, so you can look at one particular number and say, "That's where it says such and such," and instead of going from, "Well, if you go to A or B, well, this one contradicts," or that type of thing, but leave it to your discretion.
Any reaction from staff on that suggestion?
Only just to point out that I think it's, that nine is specific to the private roads, so that if, when we're looking at the infrastructure improvements, if the BAR is considering street trees for those private roads which are very far away from San Antonio Creek Road, that it still might be appropriate for them to think about whether the difference between planting trees that are currently on the preliminary landscape plan, which would be appropriate, versus maybe 100-foot tall eucalyptus trees.
All right. Well, maybe we can get the applicants and the public's reaction to that suggestion. Commissioner Brown?
Maybe what might be helpful, just to sort of make it clear, is if there was sort of a subtitle for section number nine, as you've done in section 11, where it says "view corridors," just so that it sort of pops out, so people can see it, and that it's readily available, and people understand that.
Any other questions of staff before we turn to the applicant? Any other questions of staff before we turn to the applicant? I don't see any, so we'll welcome Ms. Elidge back to the podium. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Cooney and commissioners. We're happy to be here today. Suzanne Elidge, from Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting Services, representing the applicant. Along with me today is Susan McLaughlin from my office, who managed the project throughout its processing, both the applicants, of course, and Mike Gones, our civil engineer. So we're all available for questions. We actually are not going to make a presentation to you today in respect for your time. We did quite an extensive presentation last time. We do have one minor correction and a question remaining on the conditions, but we don't have any presentation. I guess I would like to underscore the one point that I made last time about this project, which is that I think it's a model project in the sense that it has an appropriate community plan designation and zoning designation that was carefully thought out. We had an informed and, a neighborhood that was informed and participated in the process to improve the project, and I think ensure that ultimately these homes are built out to be compatible with the neighborhood. And we had an applicant who was responsive, willing to listen to those concerns, and changed their project in response to those concerns. So we're proud to be representing it. It's been a pleasure to work on, and I'll just reiterate that point that I had made last time. So at the appropriate time that you'd like to hear about my question and my comment on the conditions, I'll be glad to do that, but perhaps I could come back up after a public comment.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. We have four speaker slips submitted so far. If anyone would like to speak and hasn't submitted a speaker slip, we invite you to fill one out and pass it to Commissioner Brown. The first of our speakers is Ted Sands. He's followed by Susan Gurgic. Good morning, Mr. Sands.
Good morning. I'm Ted Sands. I live on Vill Los Padres Park Highlands, and I'm representing the Park Highlands Homeowners Association. Good day, and thanks for your attention. I want to in particular point out the cooperation we have had from the staff. It's an example of good public service, and we appreciate that. Sorry that we were not aware of the April meeting, or we would have appeared and raised the questions that we have at that time. Park Highlands Homeowners Association does not automatically object to development in the area. We've not done that. We're not doing that as such this time, unless there's a safety problem and a safety issue dealing with traffic. We are greatly concerned about the additional load. On Vill Los Santos, which bisects Park Highlands Homeowners Association, is the only ingress and egress for Park Highlands Homeowners Association, which receives heavy load from San Antonio Creek Road as well, and actually also receives traffic from Highway 154. In addition, where San Antonio Road meets Old San Marcos Road, there is additional traffic coming down San Marcos Road. That all funnels into a single point at Old San Marcos Road and Cathedral Oaks. And every additional loading to this creates problems. And not only is the volume an issue, the timing of the volume is an issue, and the speed on that area is an issue. There are additional loadings that have been placed on that in the past. For example, Posada development was approved some time ago. It's not fully developed, so any reading of traffic load or volume or speed would not be valid without considering the undeveloped lots and the Posada development. At one time, there was full access to San Antonio Road through the park. That was closed off several years ago, adding to the load on Vill Los Santos and adding to the load throughout that area. In the meantime, there were additional developments in that area, again, adding to the load, and that, we believe, has not been fully considered in here. At one time, purchases originally of the parcels along Vill Los Santos, Vill Los Padres, and San Antonio Creek Road had been shown county maps showing that there would be an overpass across Cathedral Oaks Road, and in addition, that there would be improvement of San Antonio Creek Road. None of that happened. Many of us were there during the period of the Painted Cave Fire. We saw actualities of what happens when that is funneled in there. I think the fire department misspoke at your last hearing when they said there would be access. Yes, there would be access under normal conditions, but certainly not in the case of an emergency. There was a great deal of time given to La Riata Via Regina, San Antonio Creek Road, and Vill Los Santos having immediate access, but all of that funnels onto Vill Los Santos. There are a great amount, a great many dollars, traffic mitigation expenses going into this project. We think that should be applied to relief, whether it's traffic calming or other methods. But by all means, we believe there should be emergency signs indicating that there is a safety access, exit I should say, through San Antonio Creek Park, so that anyone coming down that road would help to alleviate the terrible funneling and jamming of traffic that occurred during not only the San Antonio, or the Painted Cave Fire emergency, but other times. We believe if these steps are not taken, that this project will add, will not properly consider the traffic load, and in fact, the emperor will have no clothes because traffic will continue to increase safety to pedestrians, and cyclists will be increased to a dangerous, more dangerous level than currently. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Ms. Gurgic, followed by Danny Vickers.
Good morning, commissioners. Especially happy birthday to you. Great day for you, I'm sure. I'm speaking today about the palette, the landscape palette, because we are concerned, I'm the San Antonio Creek Homeowners Association representative, and we are concerned about the landscape around the homes, not only on the roads, but around the homes themselves. And I know the homes are limited to 25 feet, and with the maximum, and we would like to also limit the landscape trees or shrubs to 25 feet, so neighbors don't kill each other when they see, they won't be able to see their views. And is that included in any of these requests, is it? That's my question, I don't know.
It's kind of a key question, and we'll have staff respond to that.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Vickers will be followed by Fred Frankel. Welcome, Mr. Vickers.
Thank you. Good morning. I would just like to say a couple of things. First thing is, I do think that this planning process has been a good one from a neighborhood standpoint. Ideally, we'd like to see that stay as is, but that's not an alternative, but I just would like to say that I think the process from the applicant and the staff has been responsive to the neighborhood. I do think we've spent a huge amount of time trying to protect the views in that area, and we've got one issue, I think, that could frustrate all those efforts, and that is the height of the landscaping around the home, which is what Mrs. Gurgic responded to. There's a limitation along the corridors, there's a limitation in the setback areas, but there's not a limitation around the homes itself. Now, there's not very many eucalyptus trees in the area, but there are a few that have been there for many, many years. And if you look at neighborhood compatibility, I think for the most part, landscaping has been limited. So I would really ask the planning commission to seriously consider some method of limiting the height of landscaping around the homes themselves. The county's talked about a palette. I'm not sure what the best way to do that would be, but the county planners are recommending a palette. I certainly don't want to frustrate the applicant's ability to sell their homes and to landscape them properly, but I do think that would be, that would be a reasonable request, because we have spent so much time trying to protect the views along this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers, for all your contributions to this process. Mr. Fred Frankel is our final speaker.
Committee Member Brown earlier said that the view corridors are very important. He said that in this session today. And I, we really believe that, the neighbors and the associations around this project. And with that, we work with the owners to restrict home size, location, to block pub, so there's no, there's a minimal blocking of public views. So is it obvious that there should be restrictions on the height of the landscaping also? Because if you restrict the height of the house with putting up eucalyptus trees all around it, that disturbs the public views. So I think that should be made part of this. I'm sorry, I didn't understand anything. I'm sorry, what is your name?
Natasha.
Oh, Natasha. I'm sorry, I didn't understand anything about the 5,500. I guess I don't understand it legally as very much, but is county council here right now? Okay. I just had an idea. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know anything about it, but why can't we put in a provision that each homeowner and successful, successor homeowner has to sign that they have two choices? They build a 4,400-square-foot house and a separate 1,200-foot separate dwelling, or two, they could decide to build a 4,400-square-foot house and a 1,200-square-foot attached dwelling that's, you know, is part of their regular house. And they have that choice, and that being that 1,200-square-foot, the state, you know, it's included in that, and that's just a provision. They can choose that. Any subsequent homeowner, this is what the person chose, that's how they bought the house, and I think it would stand up better in the future without going through lawsuits and everything like that. Also, I want to know, if this provision comes to a lawsuit, who's going to defend it? Is it the homeowners have to sue the person who's building it, or is county council going to come in from the county to protect us from people building this additional 1,200-square-foot building? And lastly, the first gentleman was talking about the fire roads. I think maybe not put a condition on it, but you put a strong recommendation that the, that the planning commission or the county supervisors really look about fixing that road through Tucker's Grove Park, so we do have a, that would solve that problem. And it's a, it's a pretty easy solution, and we can go, and then everyone's going to be safe. Because, you know, we talk about fire, that's a big thing, but there's earthquakes, too. That's another big disaster that can happen in California. I'm not worried about hurricanes having to get down. I worry about earthquakes. And we, and people could not get out during the Painted Cave Fire, and they need to be able to get out. So some kind of recommendation or pressure or something to rebuild that road through, down through Tucker's Grove needs to be made. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We appreciate yours, Mr. Frankel. Thank you for coming. Anyone else that would like to address the commission that hasn't had an opportunity to do so? I don't see anyone, so we'll invite Ms. Elidge back for any final concluding remarks, reactions to the concerns of the public members.
Thank you, Chairman Cooney. I think I'll start out with just a couple of comments about the public comments. I appreciate the concerns of Mr. Sands about circulation in the area. I think that that topic was really fully covered at the last hearing, and I think that your public work staff indicated to you, let you know that, yes, the project was, the impacts of the project were fully considered, both from a project-specific standpoint as well as a cumulative standpoint, taking into consideration all of the approved but perhaps not yet built-out projects in the area. I think that the road system has been demonstrated to be clearly adequate for this infill project. However, there were concerns raised from a kind of a regional or community-wide perspective last time, and I believe that the Second District is interested in having some sort of community workshops in the future, where not just the daily use, which I think is, the system is completely adequate for that, but what should this area do in an emergency situation? How can those reactions be improved, et cetera? And I think that the fire district was here last time, the fire department, and there's a willingness and an interest in doing that, and I think that's appropriate, and I would think that these future homeowners will be participating in that project, or in that process. Regarding the landscape height, we covered this last time, too. As you know, the conditions of approval do limit the height of landscaping to eight to 10 feet in the wider setback areas that we have volunteered for this project. We did that out of interest and concern to protect private views. We know the county doesn't have the ability to impose those kinds of conditions on projects. Staff has raised a concern and has analyzed that there's an impact to public views, and the conditions really, the conditions that have been imposed speak to protecting public views. However, many of the development standards and our willingness, the applicant's willingness to limit the landscape height in those wider setback areas that we have volunteered truly came from an interest of neighborhood compatibility and protecting the private views of the adjacent surrounding properties. You might remember at the last presentation, and I can put these up again if you'd like to see, we did sort of a photo tour of the neighborhood and showed all of the mature trees that exist throughout the neighborhood. And we really feel it would be unfair and inappropriate to suggest that these particular lots could not have shade trees and trees for privacy on the areas of their lots outside those setback areas that are intended to provide view corridors. And if you do want to reconsider this, I would very much like to put those photographs back up for you, so you can just see from going around the neighborhood how the other neighbors in the area enjoy large trees here and there for the purposes of shade and privacy. And again, I just don't think it's appropriate or fair to take that right away from these particular future homeowners. And I think that the 5,500-square-foot limitation, I'm not sure what Mr. Frankel was suggesting with this idea of, you know, choosing one or the other. The whole idea of the way that's written is that each lot owner will have the flexibility of choosing how they want to build out their 5,500-square-feet, if they even go to that. That is a maximum. You can see from the pattern of development in the neighborhood, the slide that Natasha put up, that this really represents an average, the 5,500-square-feet. Some people will choose to build less, but whether they build a secondary unit, or a guest house, or a cabana with a pool, all of that is left up to their discretion, but they have to abide by the 5,500-square-foot maximum. So I think that's the best way to write that. Everybody has their choice and can build out as they desire. I think that's it on the public comments. I'll let you know what my, one very minor correction. On page B13, it's within the text of condition 19, there's a reference to Cozy Drive that should be Cozy Lane. It's at the top of page B13 in the very first line. And then, more importantly, I have a question about a new requirement in condition 20, which requires an endowment for the maintenance of the open space easement. And I understand that that's a standard condition when open space easements are part of a project. However, in condition number 19, we also have a bonding requirement to post for implementing the native grass plan and maintaining it. So I believe there's some overlap with having to post a bond to maintain the native grassland area, as well as in the second, in condition number 20, also providing an endowment to maintain that area. So I'd like to eliminate the bonding, if it's the endowment that you prefer to have imposed on the project, but we shouldn't have both, in my opinion. And that's it. I'm available for questions.
Questions of Ms. Elidge? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Elidge, getting back to some of the neighbor's concerns about landscaping, we already, there are... there are already restrictions on where landscaping can go on each of the lots. And I'm just wondering if Ms. Campbell has a slide, or maybe she doesn't even have that in her presentation today, but maybe you're familiar enough that you could articulate the amount of area that might be available to plant trees between this limitation, between these property lines and, and a house, or where the develop, where the house is going to be situated. And I realize we don't know how houses are going to be built, or their configuration. But I'm just wondering how much area, I mean, that may, in some cases, it may even preclude their being able to plant trees, or trees that go up very high. I don't know. I don't have that good a feeling. I thought maybe either you or Ms. Campbell could articulate that, just so we get some idea.
Commissioner Brown, just looking at the map, I tried to find sort of an average-looking lot. Lot four is the lot that's up in the northwest corner at the end of Pennell Drive, or Pennell Road, excuse me. And on that lot, it's 150 feet wide, so if you took 25 feet off each side, you'd have 100 feet across the lot that you would plant. And then it's longer than it is wide, so I just took the shorter of those lengths.
Right, and then, of course, can I weigh in too? The footprint of the house would then eliminate the remain, so it's coming up with an accurate calculation for each lot, wouldn't really be possible. But it might help to visualize this, because this is what I did when we considered the, the condition. The increased setbacks create a 50-foot swath, if you will, between structures. In other words, each lot has a 25-foot setback on the side of the property. So you put the two 25-foot setbacks together, you have a 50-foot swath within which landscaping has to be maintained at eight to 10 feet maximum height. Now, other places on the property, outside those swaths of corridors, view corridors, that was the intent of them, somebody can have a tree next to their home to shade the house and keep it cool, you know, on the right side of the house, kind of a thing. That seems appropriate to me. So we, we have those wide areas to maintain view corridors within which landscaping is limited in height. And then occasionally, there's going to be trees punctuating as, as appropriate, as exists throughout the rest of the neighborhood.
I, I'm just wondering how you would write, even write a condition that limited these heights. You plant plants that don't grow, I mean, how would, you know, because there's, and to enforce something like this? I, I understand the concerns of the neighbors, and I'm just trying to think ahead of how you would, someone could put a palm tree, and it will take 20 years to grow, and it will be the height of the house, and then in 50 years, it'll be 100 feet or however tall they get tall. But I'm just...
Natasha can speak to this, but...
Yeah, I'm sort of struggling with how one might do this, because even describing a landscape palette, you know...
Well, that's, that is the way that Natasha has suggested that we be able to control what gets planted in those setback areas. It's not as though you can plant everything, and there's a police situation where you've got to, if somebody goes around to check to make sure that you're keeping it trimmed at 10 feet. What she has put in the condition is that the palette is selected, that a landscape architect choose particular plantings that will reach their maturity at a height that does not exceed 10 feet. And that plant, that plant palette has to be approved prior to map recordation. So that's where the control comes in. And we've agreed to that.
And that somewhat limits the plant palette because of the height?
I, I think that there's, will probably be a pretty wide choice, but plant, plants that would, could exceed eight to 10 feet in height at maturity won't be on the list. Right.
Anything else from Ms. Elidge? Don't go too far away.
Okay. Stay close.
Thank you.
And if you do want to see the photographs, let me know. I've got them.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Campbell, I, I think most of the public comments were directed at the project as opposed to the legal issues. Mr. Frankel's comment more or less suggested an improved way of, what he believed was an improved way of describing the ability of a property owner to develop his or her property, and I, I'm not sure it does improve from the condition you've drafted. But why don't you address the other issues that have been raised?
Maybe I'll, I will just mention Mr. Frankel's comment first. I would, I guess defer to the commission. I think there's, if you were to take part of the 5,500 square feet and designate it for something that's non-second residential unit, it does limit flexibility in how a person might develop their lot. There may be, the majority of these parcels may not have any interest in having a second residential unit. They may prefer to have either a really large house, or a cool pool cabana, or they may have horses, or they, it, it would somewhat reduce the flexibility in how they decide to spread out that square footage.
But Mr. Frankel's concern is just that it be very clear to someone who's buying the property, and, and you're satisfied that, that this will be a sufficient part of a potential property owner's documentation, that they would know that before they purchase the property.
I would, and I, maybe I would also ask county council just to respond as far as our assurance that we can rely on the 5,500 square feet, including that second residential unit. Maybe I'll take a look at the conditions quickly and see if there's anything else we could add, though.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think the condition is very explicit in terms of use of the 5,500 square feet. It is for all structural development, and any, any owner exercising any due diligence would be aware of what they could do with their property. I don't see notice to each owner as being an issue. With respect to the issue that was raised at the last hearing, I, I looked at it at some length. We discussed it in our office on one or two occasions, and, and looked into it. And while I certainly wouldn't want to predict with certainty what a court would say, we're reasonably comfortable that this is the better view of the law, and that, given the, the nature of our ordinance, allowing residential second units, given the flexibility that exists, even if there were full structural development and a subsequent owner wished to have a residential second unit, that a challenge would be less than likely to succeed.
Ms. Campbell, we have a question here from Commissioner Blau, but why don't we go to you, Commissioner Blau, and then Ms. Campbell can follow up?
I was just going to suggest that on that, we add some, add one sentence to the language in the 5,500 square feet, to say that for purposes of calculating the maximum footage shall include any opened roofed area. Well, for example, if you have a pole, if you have a cabana not near pool, and you put in a 10 by 10 roofed area at the end of a pool, that would be 100 square feet that would count toward the 5,500 max. Or if you had a barn that, you stored hay underneath, I think that was the issue of the open versus closed. So if we just add the language to say that any opened roofed area shall be a part of the 5,500, it makes it somewhat more clear.
Chairman Cooney, Commissioner Blau, the only concern I have about that, I understand what the intent is here. We don't want somebody to try to work around this square footage limitation in the future. However, I just represented a project down on Padaro Lane that, that had to do with a patio awning, and whether that was considered a structure or not. And so I'm just concerned that some sort of roof overhang that provided shade next to a pool might be considered structural development, and I don't think that's your intention. I think what you're really trying to get at is a pole barn, or something else that's more, that truly is more of a structure. And so if we had language that was that, that particular language could actually require a pool enclosure, or a patio shade cover to count as structural development, and I, I don't think it should. But let's work on the language, because I, I understand what you're trying to prevent. And we're, the intent is, is clear. We want to limit structural development to 5,500 square feet. To the degree we have to tighten it up, I'm open to suggestions. That particular one, though, I think could cause problems in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Campbell, let's move this along. I think we're bogging a little bit, and we have two other matters we're trying to get to.
The, oh, the only other item I was thinking that you could add is that the language that's in condition 10 that deals with the structural square footage could be required to be added to the CCNRs, so that it's not, so there's just two places where someone might see it. I think there was the question about how do we make sure that these homeowners really, 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 really realize that, that 5,500 square feet is the second residential unit, in the case of Mr. Frankel's comment? Perhaps that's something we could add.
What's that condition number?
Condition number 10.
All right. That's a good suggestion. Let's, let's come back to that, and then let's move on to the other issues that were raised.
Certainly. With regard to the endowment comment that Ms. Elidge brought up, the, we have two conditions. We have condition 19 that addresses the native grassland mitigation plan and the installation and maintenance of that. And we have a second condition that comes right after that. That's the open space easement that encompasses that specific area, which includes some backyard areas of some of those lots. Condition 19 has a bonding requirement. That's for installation and the maintenance. It's not for a long-term maintenance. We wouldn't have a bond that goes out into perpetuity. That's why we typically, on open space easements, have a separate endowment. On this one, the endowment would not cover something that would be terribly expensive compared to some of these other big open space areas you might see on some subdivisions. It is really designed to cover a situation such as, well, there's, there's two easements that go across the grassland area. One is the Kachim Operations Maintenance Board has the easement that goes right through that area. There's also an easement from the Glatte Water District. If they needed to get in and deal with their pipelines and dig that area up, that area would need to be replanted. Now, there's grassland on site. They can get seeds from on site. It shouldn't be a hugely expensive operation to do that, but it's something that we'd want to make sure was, we don't want to rely on it being a priority of the homeowners association to spend their money. That way it would be helpful if there was an endowment for that. That's why we typically require this. In addition, the retardation basin, should it fill up with, fill up to the point with sediment where it was not holding the volume it was supposed to, it potentially could need to be cleaned out and then replanting in that area. According to flood control, that's probably not likely to happen more than every 50 years, if ever, just because of the watershed that would go into it. But it would be to cover that type of an event, and basically, it's just two different things. One is for the initial installation and maintenance, to make sure the grassland actually takes, and the endowment is for the long term, the mowing, the monitoring, and then any replanting that might need to be done if someone came in and needed to tear up those areas.
Commissioner Brown?
How is an endowment, how does the county look at that, or enforce it, or know how much money is required, or what is the long term? This is a condition, how...
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, we actually hold it.
Oh, okay. So how do you know if it's sufficient?
Typically. We, we do an estimate.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, maybe it'd be helpful if we knew how long the bond was going to be for the maintenance.
Our maintenance bonds are typically five years.
Okay, I would tend to agree with the applicant that if we're going to have an endowment, I mean, I understand the idea of bonding for the installation, but I don't understand the five-year bond if we're going to have the endowment. It would seem to me more, more reasonably would be a one-year bond. That way they can not pay for the bond for the additional four years, and one-year bond is reasonable, but a five-year bond I find unreasonable.
Commissioner Blau, that makes sense. I just, one thing that someone mentioned to me today on another project that has an endowment is just that sometimes when they have that bond, or the endowment set up, is that during the first five years, that there's an interest that's accruing in that account, so that it's available in the future. But as long as everything's happening the way it's supposed to, they wouldn't need to take any money out of the endowment, I guess, in the first five years.
Well, I'm just suggesting that, I'm going to suggest that we change the bond to a one-year bond and not a five-year bond. And then I think the endowment is reasonable after that, and I think the applicant would probably agree.
Commissioner Brown?
A question on the installation of this grassland, and how long it takes to get established. I mean, can someone go out after a year and say, oh, it's, you've got it done? I mean, is it done? Is it viable? It's working? It's not working? I don't know that you can do that in one year in a, I'm just wondering if that's too short, because it depends upon Mother Nature. Right, but the endowment may not be sufficient to pay for, to make up for what should have occurred during the installation, in the bonding period for that. I, I don't know. I'm not familiar with, you know...
The, the bond, though, is, is not the requirement. The requirement is to, to plant the grass and allow it to grow, and the bond is, provides a method of enforcement. So the question is, do we need that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, the, the way that landscape bonds and maintenance bonds work is we don't release the maintenance bond until we believe that the plantings have been established and cared for, and that they've reached a level of maturity that can happen in that first, that should happen in that first year. So if they weren't appropriately supplementally watering, or there wasn't enough rain, or, or whatever in that first year, we'd actually roll it over, because they've, they've got to be at a place where the bond can, can successfully be released. So I, I think we can deal with that.
Okay, fine.
Okay, Ms. Campbell, next.
Chairman, community members of the commission, with regard to access, I think that the issue with the emergency access, I think the fire department tried to address when they were here previously, but is sort of a, it's a wider, community-wide issue. It's not something that this project is triggering. And I'm not sure that we can come up with any kind of condition for this project that actually would make a difference in how emergency access operates in that area. I am aware, and perhaps Commissioner Brown could speak to this, that the second district, I believe, is setting up some workshops to, to work on this issue with the neighbors and with the fire department and other departments that deal with emergency access issues.
I, I realize it's a neighbor-wide concern. It needs to be addressed on an area basis. The only question is, because we have a discretionary project that's going to add significant numbers of trips when it's fully built out, and during build-out, even more trips, whether we can't implement some of these concepts, such as the emergency exit sign, for example, if, if someone's in that neighborhood and isn't sure which road to turn down, you know, this, this would flag that. But I, I, for one, feel as though there is a problem in the neighborhood. It can't be ignored, and, and to the extent this project is contributing, we need to take that into account. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there was a letter to Commissioner Brown from Charlie Eberling, Ebling, concerning the traffic and the speed zone. And I thought the staff did a very good job of answering that, and, you know, just like to acknowledge that, that he did look into great depth concerning the traffic situation on Villa Los Santos and San Antonio. And, but the staff did a very good job on researching it with the police and sheriff, and it looks like there isn't a major problem. It isn't to the point of being triggered for raising the level of traffic.
Commissioner Blau?
I just want to point out that I think the legislature, in their infinite wisdom when they passed AB 1600, kind of took that into consideration. You are paying traffic mitigation fees, and those fees are supposed to resolve regional traffic problems, or, you know, when all the developments occur, they all pay their proportionate share, and that's how the project gets, or how the problem gets fixed. You know, it used to be, prior to AB 1600, we could sit here and say, yeah, that creates a problem, make them widen the road, or make them change the intersection a quarter mile away. But you can't do that anymore, and that's the reason for AB 1600. So I would encourage the neighbors to, you know, contact their supervisor or write letters to try and get the road fixed, but it's not really a problem with this project. It's a problem that's in the area, and that's what the fees are designed to solve. So I'm satisfied that this project can't do anything to resolve those problems, other than pay their fees, which I'm sure they will do.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. I, as Commissioner Valencia indicated, I did inquire with Mr. Epling concerning levels of service and speeding, speed levels on the adjacent roadways. And his response was quite extensive, and if any community member would be interested in seeing that response, I'd be happy to provide it. But I, but I think that, that according to our... response, I'd be happy to provide it. But I, but I think that, that according to our traffic folks, there is not an issue. Now, the issue that is of some importance are those emergency access issues. And I, and I, I fully support what Commissioner Cooney said, that it is a problem. And with more people living in this area, it is more of a problem. But I'm not sure that we can put a condition on this particular project. What I think is appropriate is that Supervisor Wolf's office is aware of this problem. There is going to be a community meeting sometime in late June or July. And I think that's the appropriate time to address these issues. And if, I'm just wondering, and this is a question for Ms. Meister, if something were to come out of that meeting whereby emergency services or fire department or whoever might do this, might be reconsidering this, the gate at the park, how signs might be established. And I think that that's sort of, that's roads or some other department might indeed do that. And I'm wondering if there's, I'm just trying to think of some way that we can accommodate the neighbors' concerns about this. But I don't think we can do that until emergency services or whoever the folks are in charge will say, yes, we can do that. I...
All right. I, I take your point very well. I think Commissioner Blau is correct. There is a substantial fund being developed out of this development. If the, if the efforts of Supervisor Wolf can focus that particular contribution on the problems that are being experienced on a neighbor-wide basis, it's going to benefit the owners of these properties as well. Ms. Elitch, you wanted to add?
Chairman Cooney, thank you. I just wanted, for the benefit of the public, who might not have seen the public works departmental condition letter, it is a fee that's in excess of $140,000. So it is a good chunk of money. And I appreciate very much Commissioner Blau bringing that up. You can do a lot with that much money, I think, in this area, since the road system itself is adequate. But there are other things that should be taken into account in emergency situations. That's a large dollar figure. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Campbell, back to you. Any other issues that we need to be advised about before deliberations?
Chairman Cooney, last comment. Just in regard to the landscaping, I, one idea is just that in condition 11, which is the view corridor condition, the first sentence talks about development and landscaping layouts and heights shall maintain at least some of the existing view corridors through the lot as viewed from public roadways. We could just add, under the plan requirements and timing, the second sentence reads, "The applicant shall submit photos of existing views from public roadways and story poles as required by the BAR, showing how the proposal," and I would just add, "including landscaping, would affect existing public views through the site to the San Diego Mountains and/or the Santa Barbara Channel." It highlights that that's an issue. There are many, 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 many trees that could be proposed within those areas that would be acceptable. And it's something that if someone did propose something like a redwood tree, that it would highlight that issue for the BAR, and I think they would catch it.
Okay. I'm not getting any opposition to that suggestion, so.
And...
I mean, maybe Commissioner Blau is saving his objection for, for deliberations, but...
Are you talking about, I mean, I understand the applicant has agreed to a landscape limit height within the setbacks, but I'm not in favor of limiting the landscape height anyplace else on the property. Because I agree with Commissioner Brown. One of the problems is, how are you going to enforce, how's the county going to enforce some subsequent third homeowner that goes and plants a tree in there? Are we going to wait for the tree to get to be 25 feet and tall until they're going to cut it off? I just think that's problematic. I don't know of any other project that I've heard of where the county has imposed landscape limitations where it's not adjacent to a roadway for a good reason. But to limit the height of a tree in the middle of a person's private property, I'm not in favor of that at all.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I'm not either. Speaking from the agency that has to enforce conditions of approval, and that's why Natasha indicated the condition pretty carefully, that the BAR consider that in their review of both structures and, and landscape palette. We're not going to be going out to, to this neighborhood or really any other and enforcing the height of trees. It's simply the plant palette. So if, if the BAR is given instruction to, to consider the plant palette in those areas, I think that's as far as, as we're willing to even consider.
Commissioner Smizer.
I haven't said anything so far. So my only comment is that I, I don't really want that issue to go to the BAR for using the plant palette that they use on the corridors to use around the homes. And I don't want any confusion that the commission, well, that, I don't know how we're going to come down on this, but that, I, I would agree with Commissioner Blau. I, I do not want the BAR to be setting criteria for homeowners in terms of their landscaping around their home. Particularly, you know, there are a number of other issues that we could discuss about cooling houses and making sure that we're environmentally sensitive that would actually favor larger trees around homes.
Commissioner Brown.
You know, the, the issue here is that a homeowner can go to BAR, present their landscape plan, including the limitation in these setbacks. They can present a palette that even limits trees near the home. A subsequent homeowner can come in, not do any, have any requirement to go to BAR, can take out the tree or the plant, whatever, and plant whatever they want. How in the wor, you can't, there's simply no way, because we're going to have a Department of Tree Police. Now, I, I just don't know that we can do that. I, I understand the community's concerns, but I just think it's very problematical. And I think that we have quite a bit of protection here in these view corridors between each property line. And I think, as Ms. Elitch pointed out, you look around the neighborhood and other property owners enjoy taller trees, palm trees, whatever it may be. And certainly, I agree with Commissioner Smizer about shading roofs and some of the initiatives that you see in Cool Cities where they've got these large canopy trees. I just, I, I think that we've sort of met the, the neighborhood halfway in providing this condition. And the only thing I want to make sure is that this condition is so that homeowners see this and understand this about the 25-foot setback, that they will see that. It's not buried. It's going to be in CCNRs or some other document. I see that it is. Okay.
You just saw what I was going to say. Not only is it depicted on the final map, but it is required to be in the CCNRs, as are the plant limitations.
Okay, Ms. Campbell indicated she was finished. Ms. Black, you have something to add? No? Then get your hand away from your switch there. Thank you. All right, we're ready to deliberate on this matter. We've had some good suggestions for conditional adjustments. But Commissioner Brown, it's up to you as to how we proceed here.
I always like to hear from my fellow commissioners.
And Commissioner Blau will lead off.
I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to go forward and approve the project. I would hope we make sure we get the one change about the bond on the landscaping to be one year. That condition be changed. I want to make sure that we don't have any limitations on the landscape height outside of the setback areas that the applicant has agreed to. Just as a side note, we don't have to, anytime we do a map condition on a project like this, it will be in the CCNRs because the Department of Real Estate is going to make sure you do that. Anytime we do a condition, they look at those conditions and they make sure that there are not only, that the condition's in there, but if it's, if they're required to maintain it and fund it, it will be part of their budget, just as a sideline.
Anybody else? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to go forward with this project too, and prepared to approve the project. I also want to make a declaration that I had a long conversation with Ms. Elitch concerning the project sometime back after the first meeting that we had. But this project has been on for some time, and I think they're making, they're accommodating the people as much as possible. And I think those large lots are going to be a credit to the community. So I'm prepared to go forward.
Commissioner Smizer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing further to add.
Commissioner Brown, I, I would love it if we could condition the landscaping to accommodate the views, the private views of neighbors. I am satisfied, after looking at the matter closely and being educated during the last three years, that the county does not, at this time, limit private views. And what's happened on this project is that the applicant, the applicants have gone further than the law or county policy requires to ensure that there's minimal invasion of the view opportunities upslope from the project. And beyond that, I can only say, from my own experience in my own neighborhood, it depends on good neighborly relations. People will not knowingly and willingly interfere with the, with not only the view, but the peace and quiet of the neighborhood, provided their neighbors are willing to engage them and let them know that, that this is important to them. So hopefully, ultimately, we will have peace in the neighborhood as a result of everybody working hard to see that happen. And that goes for what promises to be an extended and inconvenient, at best, construction period. There's just no way around that. We're not requiring that all of these homes be constructed at once. So the neighborhood is undoubtedly going to have to endure a great deal of inconvenience. And, and I think we're limited in what we can do about that. Acknowledging that, I think this project has been very carefully thought through. A lot of work and time has been spent to accommodate the concerns of not only the immediate neighbors, but the greater surrounding neighborhood. We still have a lot of work to do, both in terms of traffic solutions, as well i- in terms of solving the problems of the, of the greater Galiata area in general. I want to comment, we always talk about the shortfalls of a project, but this project is going to be a credit to the community. It's wonderful that it's incorporating the, the new guidelines, architectural guidelines that Commissioner Brown helped to write. And I, I think I look forward to seeing what comes out of this over the next few years. So I am supportive. I, I wish we could do more about the private view issue, but I think with the applicant's concurrence, we've done as much as can be done.
I think it's a testimony to the collaboration between or amongst the applicant, the neighbors, and staff of, in the development of this project and the conditions. I think that for a project of this size and complexity, with the detail that Ms. Campbell has worked on so diligently and expertly, that you hear from this commission, few comments. We all are pretty much in accord. And I think that's, as I said, a real testament to the work that's been done to get the best possible project. And I, and while there may be some lingering concerns about some issues, some of these landscape issues, I think that this is really a great project. The one issue about emergency preparedness and access, emergency access, I think that needs to be resolved in another way. And I have spoken with Supervisor Wolf about this issue. And as I'd indicated, there will be a community meeting. And I think that this is something ongoing that Supervisor Wolf has to consider, as does the county. Have to be aware that the community is very concerned. And I think that hopefully something will come out of that meeting. I hope to attend that meeting myself and, because I know that all along the foothills that there's this problem. For those who lived through the Canadepay Fire, it's, it's a very real and emerg, and ever-present thought on people's minds about fire in this area. Again, I want to thank the planner, who I just found her work exemplary. I'm, I'm very pleased for this project. It's got more detail than I ever could think about. So I think it'll be a really great project for the neighborhood and I think for those people who live here. So with that, I am going to read what Ms. Campbell has provided here. So I don't have to read it?
You don't have to read it.
Okay. Then I would just like to move the staff recommendations as amended with several things today, with those which are on the board, as well as the two conditions about the landscaping bond and the, the CCNRs and, well, and the condition number 10 about the barns, changing that one word.
Also, I think with regard to the CCNRs, you're referring to the incorporation in the CCRs of the condition, in, in condition 10, right?
Well, yes, and also on 11, on the view corridors, I believe.
On 11, right. All right. And the grasslands bond is limited to a one-year?
One-year, correct.
Right, for maintenance to establish. Commissioner Smizer.
I will second Commissioner Brown's motion.
Any further discussion, commissioners? All right, then we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
Congratulations, Ms. Elitch. Enter your clients. All right. Our one hour per project estimate appears to have fallen off the wagon so far. It's now just before 11:00. Commissioner Smizer has requested that we take out of order item three due to the, the distance the applicants have traveled. This is, this is something, this is, do we have a representative from item two here that is to salvo? All right. All right. Well, it's always difficult. There's, we really should take them in order. But I would ask the applicant if they would consent to allowing item three to be heard first. And if the applicant isn't here, well, the applicant is, that's true. It's, it's an appeal to us, isn't it? Yeah, okay. So who's representing the appellant? If we set a time certain to return for this matter, would you have a problem with the other matter going forward? Okay. All right. We'll continue with item two, then. We'll start in five minutes.
And west elevation. Appeal issues include neighborhood compatibility, visual resources, and noise impacts. With regard to neighborhood compatibility, county policy requires that new development conform to the scale and character of the existing community and encourages cluster development and diverse housing types. The proposed project is consistent with this policy because the project is smaller than 60% of existing two-story residences. The second story is smaller than all original second stories in the neighborhood. The design has been modeled after the original tract. The design has been stepped in recess to break up massing, and it has a low roof heights and seven and eight-foot plate heights. A neighborhood study of total development for the existing neighborhood previously provided to you, found that the average square footage of the total development in the neighborhood was 2,505 square feet with a range of 2,078 square feet to 3,621 square feet. The proposed addition would bring the de Silva residence 420 square feet above the neighborhood average, making it 10th largest. However, the data also shows that there are eight original and seven new two-story residences, and that the proposed project would be smaller than six of eight original two-story residences in the tract. Additionally, the project, the proposed second story is smaller than all original second stories. Here we see a map of the original two-story residences and new two-story residences in the neighborhood. The original are in this dark green here. The new are in the gray color. And the subject parcel is located right here. The new are in the gray color, and the subject parcel is located right here. This table shows a list of the original two-story residences in the neighborhood. The proposed project, shown in bold, would be smaller than all original second stories by approximately 300 square feet. In terms of design, the proposed addition has been designed to match the original two-story residences in the tract, such as this original two-story. Again, here's the south elevation, designed with low plate heights to be compatible with the neighborhood. Here we see a new two-story residence directly adjacent to the DeSilva residence, with higher plate heights and overall height. With regard to visual resources, county policy requires maintenance and improvement of design and landscaping through the design review process. The proposed project is consistent with visual resource policies, because although BAR was not required, the project was reviewed at three SBAR meetings, all comments were responded to prior to project approval. The design is compatible with the neighborhood, and the existing landscaping would be maintained as a part of the project. Although no county policies apply to nuisance noise between residential properties, noise impacts were listed as a concern by the appellant. County policies and other areas require the interior noise-sensitive uses be protected, and that significant noise impacts be minimized. The proposed project is consistent with this noise policy, because there's no potential for significant noise impacts, and the previously proposed deck, a potential source of noise carryover, has been removed. In summary, the currently proposed project, as designed, addresses all Board of Architectural Review comments, it's consistent with all county policies, is compatible with existing neighborhood, and would have no noise impacts. In light of this analysis, staff recommends that your commission adopt the required findings for approval, accept the sequoia exemption, and deny the appeal, granting de novo approval of case number 06LUP 575. That will conclude staff's presentation.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
Ms. Mayshore, perhaps I should wait for the applicant, or perhaps you have this information. Tell me about the reduction in the window size, and how much square footage was reduced. And also, I had thought that at our last meeting, that we'd asked that the external door to the stairway was eliminated. I see that was eliminated a door between the garage and stairway.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, this is the north elevation that shows the reduced windows up on the second floor. They initially started out more of this length.
Do we know the cell height, or do we have to, what they are? Perhaps the applicant can tell us.
Looking, looking here, I would probably ask the architect for that information.
We'll defer that.
The total square footage reduction was taken from the, excuse me for a second. The square footage reduction was taken from the second story closet, it's about nine square feet. And there were two different doors. One of them was an external door that goes from the garage to outside, and then another one was between the garage and the stairway. The one between the garage and the stairway has been removed, but the other door that goes from the garage to the outside has not been removed, and the architect may also want to comment on that.
Because I thought, what was our comment of the last meeting, was the?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, my recollection is it was interior. It was that interior door going upstairs you wanted to address. So there wasn't direct access from the outside through the garage to the upstairs.
All right, then we'll turn to the appellants for public comment. I would just add that we'd appreciate it if the comments today could be addressed to the changes, and you can assume that we all are aware of the objections originally raised, so you don't need to go over the whole case again. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Tracy Anderson.
Tracy, okay, good.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before I start with the comments I prepared, I recollect what was spoken about at the last meeting, and it was most definitely the exterior door. And I believe the exterior doors are still there, which is a huge concern, because I think that was one of the major points brought up at the last meeting. So to start off with that, again, my name is Tracy Anderson, and I have lived at 509 Oak Park Place since 1972. Although minor changes have been made to the second story plans, again, none of the changes address the list of agreeable modifications made by the neighbors at our mediation meeting. I might add that the square footage changes are so slight, that staff's planner could not immediately tell what exactly the architect had changed before talking to him. I still feel that it is poor planning to allow two second-story houses to be located next to each other at the end of a cul-de-sac that already has limited parking and parking issues, which I talked about last time. Another thing to consider is that in a cul-de-sac, the access and egress must travel through the same path of traffic flow, and any increase in traffic density is felt twice as much by all residents on the cul-de-sac. The original second-story houses were located on much larger tri- and triangular lots, and it is not an exaggeration to say that they cannot be seen from other yards. And this is true through careful planning. The Architectural Board of Review said that a lot this size may not support a second-story house. And also, the design changes still do not make it resemble the original second stories. We would be very happy to support a plan that maximized the use of available ground-level space, which would then, in turn, minimize or possibly eliminate the need for second-story mass. The fact that they are still unwilling to even consider this makes me feel like the exterior door that made this look like a stealth second unit, although the interior door has been removed, is just really a sign of things to come. Again, I want to thank you for your time and effort to ensure careful planning and maintenance of the quality of life in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I have speaker slips from Ann Bailey and Gordon Azavito. I'd call on Ann Bailey as being next in line, but if you have a different order of presentation, that's okay with me.
Good morning. I have a CD that I hope will be friendly with your system and vice versa.
Is it an, if it's part of your presentation, we'll call on Mr. Azavito first, and then you can come back up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Gordon Azavito, and I live at 58, 5085 Walnut Park Drive, which is directly behind the DeSilvas. In fact, I have five neighbors that board my property. I think one of the issues is, back again to this door business of, again, it was our understanding that the exterior door leading in was going to be eliminated, and that, and our concern is that by having that exterior door, it leads to the possibility that you have a second unit, or more commonly called a granny flat. I think I mentioned that the last time I was here. And that's just not what our neighborhood is all about. It's single-family residence, granted, there may be rentals there, but it just doesn't seem right to have that. The other issue is the compatibility with the existing architecture of that tract. It's on the Mediterranean Spanish ideal. There has been seven additional second-story units, and I believe one of the commissioners brought up the fact that nobody complained about when those units were being built. Well, we did not have the opportunity to post a complaint. This is the first time in my 33 years of living in that area that I was ever given an opportunity to get up here and say, I'm opposed to this, this issue. We did have a meeting, an informal meeting, exploring the possibility of putting everything on the first floor. And I have never seen anything from the architect that even remotely considered doing anything about the first floor. I would like to see something on that. I will say this, that if the commission does allow this, I have a few conditions I would like to see imposed on the project. And one would be to move the structure over, clear up to the front of the garage, like the second-story unit next to it. Their second story is right up at the, right over the door, as far forward as they can get it. The other thing, the other idea that I should consider is lowering the structures as much as possible, and one way of doing that is to have seven-foot high walls, or seven-foot six high walls around the perimeter, and then use an open beam ceiling. That will give you the feeling of height, and not like you're being pushed down with a seven-foot-high ceiling. They do that in kitchens, but that's just only a small area. And the other thing that I was considering, and I see they have addressed it, is the high windows at the back, so that they are not looking down on my property or the other properties that are involved in this issue. And the second thing, another issue they might do, if this approved, is as far as having, the neighbors having to look at this second story, is provide higher vegetation. There is a hedge there now, and it was high, and then it'd been cut down. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Azavito. All right, Ms. Bailey, I think we're technically able to accommodate you.
If it works, I'm Ann Bailey, if it works, what the CD shows is a pan, camera pan, from my backyard, and it shows you the view corridor, the existing view corridor, and that even with the existing original two stories, as well as the existing one-story structures, you see absolutely nothing except the very top of roof lines, and that should, that should move at some point. You see trees, you see sky, you see just the very top of a roof line. You see no large walls, no windows. And that's, this is from, this shows the entire vantage point of my backyard, and my adjacent neighbors have exactly the same view. This is all you see. I very appreciate, very much appreciate the fact that some of you did come out and make a side visit. The problem is that with that side visit, you're on the street side, and you may see second stories, but what you don't see is the view that the neighbors have to live with. And this is the view that we're living with now, and we like that view a lot, and we don't want it changed. And there's no way that you could see this unless you were in our, in any of our backyards, driving through the neighborhood. Again, you may see second stories, but it's a completely different view when you step into anyone's backyard. That fence, that's, well, that's supposed to be where the new fence is, that the DeSilvas refused to replace from the windstorm in December. And that's their roof that you're looking at, and their proposed second story would rise up from that point, and as you can see, it would dramatically change their view for everyone. So again, this project, in fact, is not visually compatible with the existing neighborhood, with the way the neighborhood was originally planned and developed and designed. Even with the original second stories, there was a very, very well-thought-out plan that makes it impossible for any neighbor to see anybody's windows, anyone's, anyone else's walls. And that's the, that's the compatibility that we would like to maintain. In terms of the door issue, yes, I took notes on and recall also that the exterior door was to be eliminated, and also that the, there was a suggestion made that any windows facing the neighbors also be eliminated. Because, you know, I don't know how else to emphasize to you, and I think, you know, the picture shows it all, that there are no windows visible anywhere for any neighbors. And in terms of numbers, Ms. Mayshore, you know, went through a litany of numbers, numbers of original second stories, dimensions and whatnot, but numbers don't tell the real story when you're in a backyard, when you're in your home, looking out your window, and this is what you see, or when you're in your backyard, and this is what you see. The numbers mean nothing when you're talking about an actual physical, visual result of completely changing and irrevocably changing the neighborhood. It all comes down to what the neighbors actually see. Numbers really mean nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Anyone else that hasn't had a chance to speak? I don't have a speaker slip, but if there's any additional speaker, now would be the time to come forward.
Mr. Chair, you going to call upon the applicant?
Yes, next. All right, then, we'll turn to the applicant.
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Cooney, members of the commission, my name is Joaquin Arnellis, and we were here about a month ago, reviewing everything that has been discussed, and Nicole did a nice job in presenting the numbers that were asked of the commission, and what we discussed the last time we were here. I'd like to just kind of hit on what we discussed the last time, and maybe make it a little brief, and then see if I'd be available for questions, and see if I can answer those. There was a question that Commissioner Brown had asked, a couple regarding the windows and the door. I'd like to start off by, with the window stating that we did reduce the windows to 30 inches in height. They were four and a half, they were three and a half foot high, now they're two and a half foot high. The height on the top of the window remains the same, but they were brought up 12 inches on just the windows that face north, those, that three set of windows. So that was brought up that way. And I have to apologize, I guess, if I didn't understand the interpretation of that door access. And I understand the concern and the intent of exterior access to habitable space, and that garage has always had an exterior access. The addition, that 105 square feet that's being pushed out there, prevents that door to remain. It's nice to be in your garage and walk outside, so from the inside, without having to go through the garage door. If you can't open the garage door, if there's a power failure, you can get out the garage door. The, you know, the three-foot garage door. So I understood the intent, I felt, that we don't want to facilitate the possibility for this to be a granny flat or rental-type unit. So what I did is I eliminated that access exterior door to the habitable space, you know, which I created a little vestibule there. So I eliminated that, and then there's only that one door from the garage that now goes out east instead of south. And I understand that elevation, that door, there's a door out of the kitchen, the one that's furthest to the right, that had always been there, and the other door is just shifted over, now just comes out of the garage. So if that's still a problem, you know, we could work with whomever needs to work with that. And as far as the square footage, I'll try, I'll try to address that as well. The last time we were here, May 2nd, I had already eliminated the square footage in the actual plans, the drawings, the elevations in the floor plan. But the square footage of the 14 square feet weren't eliminated in the totals. So the number you were seeing, you were looking at was 14 square feet more than what the actual drawings reflected. So we didn't reduce the square footage from the last meeting. The number did reduce by the 14 square feet, but the drawing stayed the same. Okay? And, you know, those are really the only three. And, you know, those are really the only three things that we addressed from the last meeting, and I hope that I can answer any of the questions that you may have regarding those changes.
To Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ornellis?
Yes.
The, I think the, thank you for addressing the issue of the exterior door. So the second stairs is only accessible through the interior of the house?
That's correct. Only from the inside, that's correct.
Okay. So that resolves that issue. The windows in the exterior, what is the sill height?
It's a six-foot, eight-inch plate height to the top of the window, I should say, to the top of the window. They're thirty inches, so that was brought up to a little over four feet, yeah. Four foot four, yeah.
So the, I think it's really the privacy issue that I hear the neighbors talking about, and this doesn't really get to the privacy issue?
Uh huh.
Because someone can still stand there, and, yeah, and perhaps our developer here can explain that.
Well, is that a bedroom, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so the code requires you have to have at least four square feet of windows so that you could act, so that you could take an emergency access out for fire. So to have anything smaller than a two-foot, I think you got a 202 six-window there?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Commissioner Bloom, but I do have, or Blau?
Yeah, Blau.
Blau, I'm sorry. I do have an egress window that faces east around the corner.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So I'm kind of shooting my own foot here, but I couldn't make those smaller. I don't want to have to do something where we have to come back again and do that, but I did raise them up twelve inches. I did maintain a egress window on the east side around the corner to make sure, yeah.
I think we've answered our questions, Mr. Ornellis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh huh.
Do any of the appellants, one person representing the appellants, would they wish to make any remarks following Mr. Ornellis's comments? Mr. Azavito? No, Ms. Anderson, okay.
I just have a quick question. I still see exterior doors to the first, I'm, can we, can we look at it on the floor plans, and maybe I can better understand?
All right, who wants to, excuse me, Ms. Anderson?
Sorry.
I just want to identify who on staff is going to respond to your question.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in speaking with the architect, we've been told that that's an existing door from the kitchen, and then to remove that would remove access from the kitchen to the exterior, but if the architect would like to speak to that more.
Mr. Chairman, if we could have the architect, we have a plan up here, makes the original. If he could just redline this plan to show us what the doors are going to be configured like that, it'd be very helpful. Is that it there?
Well, let's hold off here. This is not a, an ABR meeting where we're all sitting around the table talking at once. So Ms. Anderson's asked a question, and I'm not sure it's been answered. Do you understand where the exterior doors are at this time?
I see one from the garage to the exterior, and also one from the stairwell to the exterior.
That's right.
Okay, and they was, those were both existing exterior doors?
I don't think that was the testimony. I think there was one that was already there, and that they've added one, but we'll square that away.
Okay, and I would just like to say that's still a concern.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much. Let's get Commissioner questions, and then, Mr. Ornellis, we may have you, Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ornellis, I have a question, something that came up today, although I'm not proposing it, but the question is, this portion here, why not move the garage forward? What is this distance here, like ten or twelve feet? Move the garage forward, the whole thing, twelve feet, and then you wouldn't have that problem back here. Could you answer that, please?
Sure.
I don't think that came up last time, it's something new that one of the gentlemen on, brought up.
I can answer that, and I could hopefully answer the stairway issue. There was a, an attempt to pull the garage, the second floor, see the line where the word garage is?
Yes.
Commissioner Valencia?
Yes.
Right there, there's a second floor line, is a dash red line, that's right there. There was an effort to pull that back to conform to the styles of the two stories that exist in this neighborhood, and as one of the neighbors alluded to, pulling it all the way to the front really brought a lot of mass up to the front of the house, and it was really the direction of the Board of Architectural Review that made these suggestions. So for that reason, that's why it was set back that way.
That's why it's set back.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, as far as that stairway door, I can understand the question and the concern that's existing there. That's, the first step of that stairway is, occurs, if I can point, it, yeah, just go down a little bit, or straight down, I can point to it. Oh, I'm sorry, I have a pointer here. That's correct. See, this is the first step right here. Yes, I always had an exterior door here, and this addition that's occurring, we put that door here to allow one to come out through the kitchen, because this is a kitchen space here, to come out straight through here. This is actually a door to the underside of the stairway, that's like a little to access the underside of the stairway for some storage, maybe pantry, but you can only go to the second floor from this set of steps here, so this exterior door doesn't really facilitate the steps. So I'm sorry for that confusion and that.
No, not confusion, no, my point was, and you answered it, they didn't want to see the massing up in front, so that's why it's to the back.
If you look at all the two stories that had
All right.
The original tract, add them back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ornellis, why don't you just stay at the podium one minute, and we'll get Commissioner Blau's question answered.
Sure.
I have your lights on, I assumed you had a question. No, it's okay. Commissioner Brown, do you have a question for Mr.?
Well, my question is that there are now existing then, two, one, well, forgetting the kitchen door, there's one exterior door, correct?
Right there, correct.
Which is, no, go back, is...
This is the garage one here.
Okay, and so you've eliminated?
I eliminated one right here.
Right, you've eliminated, okay, I see, it's, you know, if we had updated, maybe we did.
Because these are updated, that's the thing, we're not looking at...
Okay, this, okay, the exterior door issue is...
I hope so.
Okay, Mr. Ornellis, thank you very much. Ms. Mashore, anything to add to the suggestions you have before us?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, no. Although I did speak with Commissioner Brown about adding some language to one of the conditions on the permit, which I can put up.
Okay.
The portions to be added or altered are changing it from 4:30 PM to 4:00 PM, and then these plan requirements, timing, and monitoring portions of the condition.
Commissioner Brown?
I think we're in that portion where, unless there's any further information from the staff, or...
No, I think staff is pretty well ready for us to go.
I was concluded, so perhaps it's back to the commission to...
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
And you're waiting for our comments? Okay. Commissioner Blau's first.
I have a question, the staff, if you don't mind, because I, is the county standard for construction activities seven to 4:30, does it exclude Saturdays? Does it exclude? I'm just not sure what the standard is, and I'm a little concerned to hear from the applicant whether or not that's appropriate. If it's part of the, I just don't know, I'm just asking a question.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, I would have to look at the Goledeh Community Plan to verify the time, but I'm assuming it's four. I know, I know construction in the county is not typically allowed on weekends or holidays.
The city of Santa Barbara allows weekends on, or construction on Saturdays, the county does not. These are the same conditions in Park Hills, and that's what I...
I just wanted to know, curious, thank you.
The difference in that particular condition would be posting the site with that requirement. That would be different.
Commissioner Brown is looking for input from other commissioners. I know four of us were at the prior hearing, but I think we need to update our decision. So commissioners, who would like to go first? Commissioner Smizer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the applicant to the project has really addressed most of, well, all the concerns of the commission, at least that I had and that I heard others have. It's a, staff has indicated this is one of the smaller second units, and the smallest of all the original, not second units, second-story homes. Looking, I think one, one member of the public indicated that numbers aren't everything, and I understand that, but in this case, numbers do portray that this is a very small second story. I've also looked at some of the square footages of the lots, and there are actually second stories that have smaller lots, at least one that I found. So I think that the architect has done a good job to pull the second story back in conformity with the original design of the neighborhood. They've, I would not agree, and I think that the architect did a good job in making the windows smaller. I would not eliminate windows from that side. This is a bedroom, they're going to be concerned about keeping coverings on the windows, I would think, themselves. So the idea that, of privacy, I believe that they're, they're going to be just as concerned about privacy. I'd hate to remove windows from one side and then make that a little dark cave up there, which doesn't seem to make any sense at all. I certainly would not agree with the idea of dropping the plate height, seven foot, six inches, all the way around the building. It's already small, at eight foot, that's, going smaller than that would, I just can't agree with that. Looking around at exterior doors, I went out, on my drive-through, I saw exterior doors on garages, actually, and most garages that have a, that actually allow backing out onto the backyard have an exterior door just for that very reason, so that you can actually exit your garage without having to open up and close an automatic garage door. It just makes sense, it's convenient, and it's probably a safety feature as well. So I think that the changes that they've made responded to public, the public comment. It's noted that there, I noted anyway, there's many fewer people here from the community. It seems like at least many of the folks that came to our earlier meeting have been satisfied with the changes that have been made. So I would accept the staff recommendation.
Mr. Blau?
I'm going to agree with those comments. I would go a little farther, since this is a de novo approval, I'm not in favor of seven-foot plate heights at all, and I understand that that was part of the requirement, and I'd like to take that condition out of there. Just to give you a little history, if I'm correct about this, it was the Federal Housing Administration way back and a long time ago, that when they, trying to upgrade the quality of housing, you couldn't build a house that was financed by FHA if the plate height or the ceiling height was less than eight feet, exception being bathrooms and kitchens. So I'm just, I'm not in favor of that at all. In fact, I would eliminate that requirement if it was up to me, that they could have the eight-foot plate height. As much as I'm sympathetic to the neighbors about the view issue, I think this commission order to grant the appeal has to have a finding that's consistent with county policy, and that's just not it. The county doesn't address the issue of private views, or windows from two stories looking into one stories. They do for issues of compatibility, but again, you've got several two-story houses in there, this one's not larger than the average, so I could find no reason to grant the appeal, even if I were to agree with them. So based on that, I'm prepared to support the project as proposed by the architect and by the BAR.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with my fellow commissioners. The only thing I would have done different, I would have put the massing in front and thereby given the neighbors in the back a little bit more privacy, but other than that, I agree with everything that's been said. It's a small addition, and I disagree with also the 7.6 height, I think that's terrible, you know, the quality of life, you know, nowadays, 21st century, you're making nine-foot roofs, ceilings, and here you're going to 7.6, it just doesn't make any sense as a condition. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Brown, I voted against the project last time, prior to the continuance, and then voted in support of the continuance in the hope that changes could be made to the project that would address the concerns of the neighbors. And I, I think two things about that. One, the neighbors had the absolute right to come and appeal this project to the planning commission, and I think the process has directed the project in the right direction. It, it's a better-looking structure than it was before, and I believe it does, to some degree, address the privacy issues. What it doesn't address is the view issue, and I applaud Ms. Bailey for showing graphically and expressing orally her concern that it's a view issue. It is. It's definitely going to change the view within, at least the immediate neighbor's view shed. And the question is, are we in a position to tell this applicant on the basis of compatibility with the neighborhood that they can't add a second story when there are already in the neighborhood numerous properties with second stories? I don't think it's so much the second story as it is the design of the second story, and to me, there has been a significant effort made to, made to improve the appearance and the impact on the neighborhood. Now, I struggled to find the 7.6 plate height condition, but my, my recollection is that the applicant brought that plan to the commission as a result of communications with the neighbors in an effort to resolve some of their concerns. It is lower than some of the extreme massing that we see in the neighborhood, and I think it makes a difference. So, well, I would hope they would stick with the plan. It would be my inclination to continue with a condition that's been agreed to by the applicant. So I would vote, Commissioner Brown, based on this plan, to approve.
First of all, I would like to thank the applicant for eliminating that exterior door, and for changing the windows in the back, although I don't believe that what the applicant has done will eliminate some of the privacy concerns by the neighbors. I'd like to speak to a moment about the private views. I'd like to speak to a moment about the private views. I think that this commission has heard and others who've been involved in projects that I've reviewed have heard me speak of a neighbor who put in a second-story window overlooking my backyard. And these were in the days when we didn't get notifications of within 300 feet. And fortunately, the county has done a great service to the neighborhoods by doing the noticing so neighbors can provide input into projects. And that's been a great boon and of course, the appeal rate has gone greatly up and more neighbors have participated in making sure that their communities are what they feel is in accord with what the guidelines are. However, it's really for me not so much a private view issue, but it's a privacy issue to have these windows now overlooking your yard. And that doesn't mean that people are going to stand in their windows and overlook your backyard, but you do get that impression that people do do that and it's a loss. It's a feeling that you have lost the privacy of your own backyard and that's one place that we can escape to where we don't have other sort of intrusive, the other intrusions of our life. And here we have a neighbor wanting to put up a second story with these windows. So, it does affect kind of the feeling that our backyard, it belongs to us. I'd like to speak to a moment to the massing issue that Commissioner Valencia spoke to. And I agree with what Mr. Ornellis has proposed because in the Galleta, Eastern Galleta Valley Residential Design Guidelines, we do talk about pushing the massing back so that does present a better appearance to the streetscape. So, I think that that's, that he's done an adequate job there. However, I have continued problems with neighborhood compatibility. I drove the neighborhood again this morning and because it is an issue of the existing, the original tract homes that were second story. And I didn't, I admit, I didn't drive every single cul-de-sac and every single road, but I drove oh, three or four of them to get a sense of what the original neighborhood looked like, to understand what was in these cul-de-sacs, to look at the, all the one-story homes that were in many of these cul-de-sacs, to look at the juxtaposition of the original two-story homes. And what I saw was in most of the cul-de-sacs, it was predominantly one-story homes. Now, over time, that's changed. But in the other areas, the two-story homes were not on cul-de-sacs. They were on streets that were either adjacent to the creek, they're open space, on a road that was not a cul-de-sac. So, there is the relationship of these second-story homes with these one-story homes. And in these, this one cul-de-sac, it was originally all one-story homes. So, for me, that the compatibility issue is about adding a second story. And I'm not saying it can't be done. It can be done, but I think that this second story is way too big. I think it violates the compatibility standards for this particular little area. And again, this neighborhood issue and community is all very subjective. The county doesn't provide us any sort of standards about how, what we compare. Now, in the Eastern Galleta Valley Residential Guidelines, there is a discussion about how you compare neighborhoods so that in doing a second story, one can look at the tract and get a sense. Now, I admit it is confusing here, but in these several cul-de-sacs, it was one-story and I think that in my own view, that the applicant would have been better to have built a one-story. There's plenty of room. They could have done that and to help preserve the neighborhood compatibility. And again, I spoke about that second story next to this, to the applicant's house, which we don't design from homes that are not well-designed or well-done. That's not the standard. So, I cannot support staff's recommendation and I see that I'm the only one on the commission that can't adopt the required findings or I can't deny the appeal just based upon neighborhood compatibility issues. So, some other commission member will have to adopt the, make the required motion.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Valencia?
Mr. Chair, is it appropriate then, since Commissioner Brown of the district is not willing to make a motion to approve the project for somebody else to move forward?
It is.
All right. And at this time, I'd like to move for the staff recommendation with an additional change, that the plate be changed from 7.6 to a minimum of eight feet.
I think you meant to say a maximum of eight feet. And if that's what you meant to say, then I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Can we have discussion on that? Commissioner Smizer?
All that I would like to know is from the architect, whether that change to eight foot. I know that the seven foot six, I think, was in the kitchen, I believe, or bathroom.
It's just the bathroom, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we want to get kitchen word out of this. It was in the bathroom where it was only seven feet and it was over the, where the lavs are. And it's only one part of it. So, I tried to lower the front part to seven feet, but the rest of the structure had always been eight feet. And so, I don't believe I had suggested to lower it to seven and a half, but I will keep the bathroom at, you know, the seven feet that's called out there. It just, it pulled that down a little bit lower, if that's okay.
That's all right.
And it's over the sink, so it's not a height issue.
I just don't want you to do any substandard building.
No, no, no.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, the applicant could certainly go lower than eight feet. Seven foot is allowed in bathrooms and kitchens. I just, I'm just trying to make an issue here that if I see other projects come before me and the B.A.R. has reduced the plate height to seven feet, I'm not going to support it. I think that, you know, that, I don't think they... A foot in height for an exterior elevation, I don't think is perceivable by anybody, even people that are pretty expert about this. If you wish to make it lower for other reasons, that's your choice, but I don't want this commission or the B.A.R. dictating seven-foot plate heights. And so, I'm fine with the way it is.
Mr. Chair, I think the staff recommendation is consistent with that. There is no specific condition requiring seven feet.
All right. Just in the interest of clarification, Commissioner Valencia, could I ask you then to consider changing your motion to support the staff recommendations as presented?
That's fine.
Is that acceptable?
It's agreeable to a second, yes.
All right. Then I think we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Blau?
Yes.
Mr. Smizer?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Hi.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Vote carries for one.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks to all the neighbors for all the time you put in and for staying through this process and to the applicants for all the effort they have put in. Good luck during the construction process. With regard to item three, is there anyone here at this time? Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking right past you. Could you come up, please? Good morning.
Mr. Chair? Well, sort of good morning.
We're at the noon hour and normally, we would take a break at this time. I would be willing to ask my fellow commissioners for a delay in their lunch if it would make a material difference to the applicant and you.
It would, and I think it would allow everybody to go home early.
Commissioner Smizer?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate that offer and I would ask the rest of the commission to stay here. I don't see, the gallery's fairly empty. It appears to me that this matter might be able to be resolved certainly within a half an hour and perhaps even within 20 minutes. So, I would appreciate that from the rest of my fellow commissioners.
Any objection?
Oh, we can have a five-minute break.
I was going to say, did you need it?
Yeah, we'll take five minutes for you to set up and we'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you.
June 6th, we are about to turn to item three, which is the Monty Roberts Equestrian Academy application, which Ms. Contreras will read into the record for us.
Thank you. The following is the hearing on the quest of Eva Turancheck and Susan Petrovich, agent for the owners, Monty and Pat Roberts, to consider the following application filed on March 25, 2005, 05-DVP-16 and 05-CUP-22, and to accept the exemption pursuant to sections 15301, 15322, and 15323 of the state guidelines for the implementation of SEQA.
Thank you very much. Do we have staff site visits and ex parte communications to report? Commissioner Brown?
No ex parte site visit on Sunday.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a site visit and a tour of the facility with Mr. Roberts.
And Commissioner Smizer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a site visit. I also discussed the current operation since this is an as-is application with both Susan Petrovich and the applicant.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Karamitza. Welcome to the South County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, commissioners. This project represents an as-built development plan and associated conditional uses for longstanding structures and uses on the project site. The application was submitted some time ago in 2004 based on a zoning violation received, as you're aware, in response to a complaint that was filed. At least in part, the extended time period between the application incomplete letter in April of that year and the recent completeness determination involved Caltrans issues. And we're glad to have the project in front of you today. Tammy Weber, who's taken this project to you, has been with the department for less than three months following a very successful stint as an extra help planner. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tammy and welcome her.
Ms. Weber, welcome.
Thank you. Good day, Chairman Cooney and commissioners. The case before you is a two-part request for the approval of, one, a development plan consisting of existing structures, and, two, a conditional use permit for training seminars, horse shows, and special events. My presentation will take about 10 minutes.
Do you want to turn the clock on, Ms. Contreras?
The project site is designated as an inner rural agricultural area and is enrolled in the Ag Preserve program. The location of the site is between Bilton and Sauvang off of Highway 246. The development plan would validate approximately 87,000 square feet of build-out. The infrastructure requesting to be validated is needed to support the conditional use requests as well as other existing training operations. The conditional use permit requests are for the validation of farm employee dwellings, training seminars, and charitable events. The CUP would validate several different seminars and clinics. Here is an overview of the horse facilities and structures that you would be validating. The farm employee dwellings, hay barns, and the residence that exists on the parcel. Over here, we see the Roberts residence. Which is not part of the project description or included in the project. We have site plans depicting structures needing to be validated. And if you need square footage information, you can find that on page five of the staff report. The activities asking to be validated are horse operations that have been in existence since 1966. These include breeding, training, rearing, selling, and boarding of horses. These seminars are to teach students of all ages Monty Roberts' join-up method of training. The fundraisers have been in support of a variety of nonprofit and political organizations in Santa Barbara County. Staff analysis focused on the amount of traffic generated due to training operations and special events as well as adequate sewage disposal for these types of uses. Both issues have been addressed to staff satisfaction per Caltrans' no-comment letter and EHS's condition requirements as stated in their letter, which is included in conditions of approval in the C2 attachment. Comprehensive plan consistency determinations are made for these and other required areas. There are three SEQA exemptions in which the project adheres to. It is exempt pursuant to SEQA exemptions 15301, existing facilities, 15322, educational training programs involving no physical changes, and 15323, normal operations of facilities for public gathering. This completes my presentation. We are available for any questions and comments. I'm prepared to present the recommendations and procedures at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Brown?
Ms. Weber, a question concerning the seven-six-hour fundraiser special events. I presume because this is on Ag Preserve, that this is, this means charitable, doesn't mean private. What does it mean?
Our ordinances don't have any so-called regulations, I would say, to limit them to charitable or special events, though APAC did require them to go down to seven and they did name them as charitable events also.
So, all right. So, I'm wondering, because it's sort of open-ended, it doesn't say charitable, it just says fundraiser special events and special events can be, could mean anything.
That is correct.
Okay. The other question I had is, a year and a half ago, we saw another project up in Los Olivos area that was a similar type, a much smaller operation, but they trained horses and other things. And there was an emergency preparedness plan that was done for that project. And is there, I don't know, is there a requirement for something like that in a facility of this size?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, you're referencing either the Shelley or the Gurnert CUP that was, has been recently approved, I believe. And those two CUPs for equestrian facilities did include emergency preparedness plans based on staff identification of a need to ensure the care of animals. In this case, we haven't included it, but at your direction, and we've briefly discussed this with the applicant and the agent, they have all that information in place. That's the way they conduct their information. And so, I would ask you to bring that up when the applicant makes their presentation. Again, just to reiterate Ms. Weber's comments about the special events, our zoning ordinance and land use development code address special events. And it was the Ag Preserve review of this which specified charitable events. And so, we could make that explicit as it relates to consistency with their Ag Preserve contract.
Any other questions at this point of staff? All right. I think that's fine. Then we'll turn to the applicant, Ms. Petrovich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Susan Petrovich with the law firm of Hatch &amp; Parent, and I am here representing Pat and Monty Roberts, who between them are an institution in San Inez Valley. I will be brief, as the staff has been. Mrs. Roberts is present to answer any questions if needed. I do want to thank the staff for what I think is a very thorough staff report. There were two changes, though, that they failed to address and I guess, would you like me to describe them or I can defer to staff? The staff report on page six. The paragraph, one, two, three, four, the fifth full paragraph down that starts "Flag Is Up Farms", the last sentence says the Roberts home is located on APN 137-120-085. That should be stricken. The Roberts home parcel is not part of the development plan or the CUP. So, it's not part of the project. That same language appears on attachment C2, the conditions of approval. The very first page of C2, and it's the last line in the first... The very first page of C2, and it's the last line in the first paragraph under the project description is as follows. So that should be stricken. And if we've missed it and it appears anywhere else in the staff report or in the conditions of the project description or the findings, it should be stricken because, as I say, that is not a part of this project application. This staff report and the staff's presentation has described accurately the project, which is an operation that has been ongoing since the late 1950s and the early 1960s. The operation is really an anchor for agriculture between the cities of Buellton and Sauvang. It's a very important part of the valley's agricultural heritage. And it's compatible with the other horse farms along that corridor. In fact, those farms really create the ambiance of that corridor. As you know, I have been a relentless voice for agriculture in this county. And I'm also a lifelong equestrian. I've watched the valley's evolution over the years. And I've watched horse operations gradually disappearing and the creation essentially of a much more urbanized feeling in the valley. So I feel that a facility like this is vital to maintaining the character of the valley. From an agricultural perspective, this operation has become a very important part of the Highway 246 corridor. And it helps hold the line on the urban expansion. And from an aesthetic standpoint, it's just an incredibly beautiful amenity with its irrigated, well-maintained pastures and fencing adjacent to the highway. It's just a beautiful facility. Like all agriculture, this operation has to make money to continue viably. The horse operation includes many components. It includes the training of horses. It includes breeding, you know, training people and horses to use a gentle, nonviolent method. And as a horsewoman, I have to tell you, I have visited and used many, many horse facilities, not only around the United States and California and in this county, but elsewhere in the world. And the Roberts Equestrian Academy is one of the cleanest operations that I have ever seen. The pastures, the grounds, the barns, everything is just impeccably maintained. The horses are healthy. They're treated well. They run it in a very businesslike and professional manner. The dust is controlled with a water truck. Odor and fly control is just incredibly meticulous. It just doesn't smell like a stable. It is just a standout in every way in that regard. I do want to include that the agricultural element of the comprehensive plan calls for encouraging and enhancing agricultural operations. This is an existing, ongoing project. It has been operating at the level that we are requesting for more than forty years. The number of special events, the issue was raised about the special events. This number of seven with up to three hundred attendees is an accurate representation of what has occurred over the years. Obviously, it's differed from year to year, depending on demand mostly. And the special events, for the most part, are for the community's benefit. But they're not charitable. And there was no condition. I read the APEC's minutes, but they didn't condition that they be charitable. In fact, they haven't all been charitable. Many of them are. Don't get me wrong. Many of them are. But some of these events, for instance, this was one of the original venues for the burgeoning Vintners Festival. Now, that wasn't a charitable event, but it was an agricultural event. And it allowed the Vintners to grow that festival into something that outgrew this facility, frankly, and had to go to a much larger facility. But it provides a very important venue for just that kind of community event. In addition, some of these events will be to promote the academy's operation, their training methods. It's part of the way you market. And you've probably heard this from Vintners and for their wineries. The same is true for a horse operation. They are selling a service. They are selling horses. They are selling their training method. They are bringing people in to see the benefits of this training method. So we would have a very serious problem with having it characterized. Oh, I should add that it's also been a venue for many political candidates, both local and statewide candidates. So it's a very rare place. And one of the things that makes it especially good for that purpose is that it has an open area, this covered arena, combination arena and barn, that's good for people to come and congregate. But they've also got all their pastures irrigated. So for the overflow parking, you're not putting people in a dusty field. You're putting them in an irrigated pasture so you don't have the nuisance of dust. And all the attendees keep their cars clean as a consequence. But it also avoids an impact on the neighbors and on our air quality. Unlike many other facilities that you may see, this one takes its access directly off the highway. And as Mr. Karamitza noted, Caltrans doesn't have a problem with that. There is the left-turn center lane there on the highway. But it took us forever to get feedback from Caltrans to get that letter. It doesn't rely on an access road that goes to a neighbor's property or through residential and ranchet neighborhoods. It's really a very unique venue. And that's why we believe it is suitable for the uses that we're requesting and will be compatible and has been. I mean, the proof is that it has been there for so many years without you being bombarded by complaints over those years. The classes are all essential to the economics of the operation. As I said, in order to breed and raise and train and sell your horses, you have to have the ability to train people to adopt your training technique and to have them seek you out and your horses out. And to perpetuate equestrian arts. You know, part of this application includes horse shows. And I remember the days when we had horse shows all over this county. There are almost no venues left for that. That's an important recreational and component of the community. And it's an important part of our agricultural heritage that we need to maintain. And frankly, with our increasing urbanization, it's getting harder and harder and harder to find perfect places like this for this kind of operation. But that's what horse facilities are all about, and at least the few that remain in the county. So just in conclusion, I want to say that when I was a young girl in this community, I recall there being horse boarding, training, and breeding operations virtually all over this county. They were in Montecito, they were in Summerland, and they were all over the valley. And to tell you the truth, if it hadn't been for the many horse breeding operations during the tax benefit days of horse breeding, the valley's character, I think, would be very different today because the horse operations held the line. Now the vineyards have come in and they've held the line. But the valley was under tremendous urbanization pressure. And the horse breeding was one way that we ended up with the open spaces that we have. In Montecito and Summerland, except for the Polo Fields and a few places associated with the Polo Fields, we have no facilities for boarding, training, and breeding. And San Inez, one by one, they've gone out of business. It's a sad loss for the community. So by approving this project, you ensure that this horse facility will continue indefinitely into the future on a site where it has operated for so many years as an asset to the valley and to the community. So I would ask you to approve it and not to limit the special events. We do not have a problem with the emergency preparedness plan, as Mr. Karamitza pointed out. That's already how they operate. So that's not an issue. Do you have any questions?
Yes, we do. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My only question about the charitable events is that the APEC had indicated charitable events. And I didn't know if you had attended that meeting and did they say, maybe they said that but didn't mean that.
Mr. Chair, I think we intended to comment on that. If you read the APEC minutes, I think they were just referring to the number of events and they referenced them. County Council's indicated there's really no difference in physical effects to a.
We did reduce the number. I can't remember the original number. It's been so long.
We are not recommending that that condition change.
And do they have to apply, do they have to let the county know that they're having these special events? No, they can just have them?
It's part of the permit.
Okay.
Mr. Blau?
I'm just questioning the limitation of the seven events. Is that something that this commission has the ability to increase? I'm not sure. And that creates some kind of a problem for you.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, if I may. This property is in the agricultural preserve. It is under contract. The APEC is essentially saying, "We'll let you have up to seven." But by their nature, special events may tend to impact agricultural operations, not only on that parcel, but on adjacent agriculturally productive land. So it is within their purview to make recommendations regarding consistency with the Williamson Act. And this is part of their function, doing that. So to the extent they want to keep their contract, they, I'm sure, are mindful of what the APEC recommends.
So if they have more than seven, you're telling me that would violate the contract and that would be a different problem?
It could be considered a violation. If they introduce large numbers of people continuously on an agricultural property, not just here, but any place, that may tend to impair the agricultural productivity of the land or of adjacent land, that could be a violation of contract or of the Williamson Act and of the Williamson Act. So I'm sure this was mutually arrived at and they're agreeable with it.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, maybe I could speak to that. There is no fine line, as I'm sure County Council would agree. We had asked for more just to accommodate the community because these venues are shrinking or, you know, going away. But we can live with seven. I suppose if things change and the community asks, you know, the community demand becomes so significant, we could come back and ask. We just didn't, that's what APEC was comfortable with. So that's what we agreed to. APEC is an advisory committee, of course.
Yeah, just to clarify, that's the Agricultural Preserve Advisory Committee, which is appointed by the Board. And we're not bound by its findings, but I know the commission is inclined to take their recommendations into account.
I'm just wondering if it would be prudent for us not to include the limitation in there and they can deal with APEC the way they want to. I would hate to see you want to have eight or nine events. And that's, because I'm concerned that this is real good for the community. I mean, it's a real, and I would hate to limit the benefit the community has. So if you were comfortable with more events and it didn't violate the Williamson Act, that'd be your call. But I think what we're doing here is we are putting a limitation of seven. And for you to have more than seven now is going to violate the conditions of your CUP.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, members of the commission. We have a general plan consistency policy where properties are in the Williamson Act that we carry out projects consistent with the requirements of the Williamson Act. And so APEC is one mechanism to ensure that properties are consistent with the Williamson Act. There is a specific provision in the government code that addresses the inimical effect, if you will, of introduction of large numbers of population into agricultural areas. It would be my recommendation that you keep the condition to further consistency among our advisory bodies, the law applicable to the Williamson Act and this project as it's conditioned.
And we are comfortable with the seven, so.
Any other questions of Ms. Petrovich? All right. Thank you very much. I have one additional member of the public who wishes to speak, Jeff Lockwood.
Yes, my name's Jeff Lockwood. I live right next door to the Roberts. And we share the same driveway. And from the time that we've been there for the last three years, their facility has imposed absolutely no impact on us. In fact, we hardly see what goes on over there, the way the property is set up and stuff. So I would hope that the council would approve this. We welcome them as neighbors, as business associates, and as a valley resident also.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. And thank you for coming all the way over to tell us that brief but important information. Are there any other speaker slips? Commissioner Brown, all right. Then we're back to staff, Mr. Karamitza and Ms. Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have language for the emergency preparedness plan on the Elmo. Terry's going to help me put that up. It has been reviewed, as you heard, by the applicant, and they accept it. The other change I would like to note to the conditions in the departmental letters, there's references to no-condition letters. And those should be stricken. So I'd like you to make that as part of your formal motion, that the no-condition letters aren't part of the approval packet. We just missed that. And so only the departmental letters that condition the project will be included in the action letter. So with that, those are the only comments we have. Ms. Weber, do you have anything else to add?
Right. Yeah, we do need to modify the two places that Ms. Petrovich pointed out, which included the reference to the owner's residence.
And staff concurs with that, of course. And any other locations where we find that in reviewing the action letter, we'll make that note.
I have a question about the environmental review notice of exemption. And it's really a question perhaps Mr. Allen needs to answer. And that is, there's a reliance on an existing operation. And I'm aware of the exemptions that have basically defined an operation and indicated that there's no significant environmental impact by the application, as in this case. My concern is here, this has not been permitted as an operation in the past. So when has there ever been environmental review unless the contention is that its origin in 1966 as a horse operation is the basis for that exemption? I'm not suggesting there's evidence of significant impact, but it does seem that we're now permitting for the first time an operation of significance, which if it was subject to an original application, would at the very least involve environmental analysis. Mr. Allen?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I think that's a point well worth looking at. And I wouldn't suggest taking this use as a precedent. And of course, as every project is unique, it isn't. I think staff looked at this and simply took it as a baseline. And there are two other exemptions that certainly do apply. So I don't see it as a problem for this project.
Anything further? Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, the only thing I would note is that this operation has been in existence since the 60s, apparently, well before CEQA was even in existence. So it just seems to sort of bolster that baseline determination.
I understand. I think that particularly in analysis of projects that are coming to us as-built, we don't want to get into the trap of using the existing operation as the baseline if there's never been any environmental review. This could have been, you know, an operation of a cement plant or something that would have obvious environmental impacts. And the fact that it was originally operated but unpermitted would not necessarily mean that it's exempt forever from environmental review. That's the only question I'm raising here. Mr. Karamitza.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to very briefly add to that, because I was involved in making that determination of what the baseline would be. And we did identify this project as unique in that capacity. It's been longstanding. It's been longstanding. And in addition, the current project will subject the structures and uses to environmental health services and building and safety standards for the structures and uses. The traffic, for example, has been in place for all countywide in analysis. The existing traffic setting, which was the critical one, is in place. And so we did feel strongly that it was an appropriate, albeit discretionary decision we made or, you know, decision we made to determine the baseline as what exists there. Because there is certainly a justification for, in other cases, reverting to the approved or the approved uses. And so you can also look at unapproved uses and analyze them as if they weren't there. But in this case, we didn't feel it was appropriate at all, and we were comfortable with that. So I hope that helps.
Well, I think the point you're making is that there was a level of environmental analysis done by staff with regard to this project to determine that the exemptions were applicable and available here. But if there are other unpermitted operations of any type, including agricultural, in the valley or elsewhere, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to use those existing operations as baseline if and when they come in for a permit, a first or a modified permit. Okay. That's all I want to have clear on the record for the benefit of future analysis. Anything further from staff before we come back to the commission? All right, then we're at the point of deliberation. And Commissioner Smizer, this is a third district item. How would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'm willing to listen to whatever concerns or questions that the rest of my fellow commissioners have. I would just like a brief comment that Ms. Petrovich, pretty, she sounded like a valley The true, there was truth in everything that she communicated to this commission about the way that this operation is viewed in the valley. It is a world-class, not just a California class or not just Santa Barbara class facility. It dovetails in with other world-class horse facilities that we have in the San Inez Valley, such as the Alamo Pantato Clinic, run by Dr. Hethel, which is again another world-class horse facility. And so it is important that they be there. I know the two communities of Buellton and Solvang have designated that corridor along 246 as a premier corridor for the valley and have every intention of trying to maintain that agriculture stay there and that the view shed and the transportation corridor there not increase, expand, or change from its current condition. So I am a supporter of the project. I'd be happy to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Brown.
I support the project.
Commissioner Blau.
I support the project, and I think it's unfortunate that you had to go through this much expense and time in order to gain these approvals. And I wish there was some cheaper and easier way for you to accomplish this goal, but I appreciate your patience and appreciate you doing this.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, when I had my tour of the facility, I found the facility to be extremely clean. I've seen other facilities in the past where they're absolutely dirty and disgusting. This is so immaculate, it is unbelievable. And then not only is the entrance corridor so beautiful, you've got to go through it to see it. I mean, it's a place to get, is just like a new Shangri-La when you drive through about a half a mile of roses and trees and a manicured lawn. And throughout the facility, this theme has continued, even in front of their offices and all that area. I just was so impressed with this facility, and I hope that we don't do anything to create a problem for them. And I agree with Commissioner Blau when he said that, you know, if they have seven events there, if they need to have 10 for the year, I'd hate for them to have to come here for three more events. I mean, somehow or another, I think seven events is kind of restrictive. And considering that the PAC is only administrative and not a binding edict, I mean, it's just a recommendation. I don't think we really have to adhere to it. I think we should just use common sense, and I would be willing to move that up to 10. But as they've indicated, they're happy with seven. But I support the project.
Commissioner Smizer, I do think it's worthwhile that the applicant has taken the time and expended the financial resources to bring this matter to the county, to get it to the point where many, many other horse operations are in terms of permits. And I appreciate their willingness to do it. I certainly appreciate their willingness to take on a quality advisor like Ms. Petrovich. And I think this is a model for all of the ag operations. It may be burdensome. It may be unduly burdensome, in fact, in some cases, but I do think it's the right result. If everyone is willing to come in, get their permits, I think they're going to find at least this commission and the Board of Supervisors supportive. So with that, I'm certainly ready to vote in favor of this application. Commissioner Smizer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In that case, I would like to make a motion. Before I do, I just want to address two concerns of Commissioners Blau and Valencia. I think that I'm comfortable with the number of special events, mainly because the applicant is comfortable with that. I'm also, I don't want to minimize the role that the APC, excuse me, A-PAC performs because the PAC is an essential element in preserving our Williamson Act farms and properties. And I think that advisory group does a wonderful job in helping agriculture and promoting agriculture in our county. So there's been times when they've made recommendations that I have not been happy about. One that just occurred a little while ago, if you'll recall, about soccer fields. But I appreciate the fact that they're there, and I live with their opinions because they really are truly a voice of agriculture in the county. So I'm going to stick with that, and that's my, my motion's going to say that I, we adopt staff's recommendation with the changes of the emergency preparedness plan being provided, that we strike the no condition letters, that the owner's parcel will be removed from the project application. And I believe that takes care of it.
Second.
Any further discussion? I think your motion should be interpreted to include any other changes that we might have made. I think you've got them, but I want to be sure we haven't left something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's something else that I left off, then we'll include that as well.
All right. We're ready for the vote. Ms. Contreras.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Mr. Smizer.
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia.
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Vote carries five zero.
Thank you very much, Ms. Petrovich and Mrs. Roberts. That concludes the business of the Planning Commission for today. We will meet soon again tomorrow morning at the Betaravia Center at 8:30 a.m. Thank you very much.